Welcome, everyone, to the school committee meeting of Thursday, October 26, 2017, at 6:30 PM in the East Coast. Let's see. Tonight, we have one person for public participation, Christina Falcone. Come on up.
Come on down.
With Strom Thurmond once said it at a hearing, remember that, Paul? Speak into the machine.
Got it. So, I was here last meeting. I have three children, kindergarten, a first grader, and a three-year-old. Two are at Stratton, and one is here at Monomy. And this week, my son's kindergarten class TA got moved to full-time. And I'm beyond thrilled that he and his classmates will have two teachers in the class to provide a solid foundation in his kindergarten year. As thrilled as I am, I would like to make a push for all kindergarten classes in Arlington to have full-time aides this year and in the future. It's a necessary need to support students and teachers in a positive learning experience. No matter how many students are in the kindergarten class, kindergarten will always be their first public school experience, and it needs to be made positive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Except on the same topic.
Okay. You're all set then. Okay, great. Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Bodie in a minute, but the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Sarah Byrd, the Director of Guidance and Social and Emotional Learning. Welcome, Sarah.
Yes, Sarah.
You come up to the -- yeah, Dr. Bodie's gonna introduce you.
I want to welcome Ms. Byrd, Sarah Byrd, to Arlington Public Schools. She's actually worked with us off and on as a consultant over the last few years. And I know she's going to stand and do her presentation, but we are very fortunate to have Ms. Byrd with us. She has been instrumental in helping us develop the action plans for our social-emotional learning in our schools. And this is a position that has been on field for several years. So, it's not as though we haven't looked, but we hadn't found the right person, and we have very much so in Sarah Byrd. So, I want to welcome her. So, she's -- tonight, we've asked her to have an opportunity to talk about where we are with Safe and Supportive Schools, the grant, and our plans for this year, and then also it's an opportunity for you to get to meet her.
That's good. That was a wonderful introduction. Thank you, Kathy. So, I put in a slide to say hi. Nice to meet you all, because I have not yet been in front of school committee before. And Dr. Bodie already gave you a nice little rundown of who I am, but just to let you know my official role is I'm the Director of Guidance and Social-Emotional Learning for the district pre-K through 12, which is very exciting for me. I am a guidance counselor, a school adjustment counselor. I'm also a clinician as a registered drama therapist, and that's where I've gotten my clinical skills from. I am equally an administrator for social-emotional learning, which I served in that role for about seven years in Redding Public Schools. And I'm very excited to be able to bring that experience to Arlington. Selfishly, I live in town, and so I'm very excited to be able to work in my own hometown and contribute to the community, especially when my daughter's gonna be here just shortly at some point in kindergarten, so I'm very excited for that. I wanted to say just briefly a little bit, people often tend to know what guidance counselors do and how they work in the district. People often draw a little bit of a blank when we talk about social-emotional learning. So, just a quick snapshot of what that might be. Social-emotional learning are all of the skills and the competencies that young people, as well as adults, need in order to interact with others, with circumstances, with jobs, with life decisions, with the world around them. We do a really great job in school teaching content so that we have the knowledge to be able to navigate that world. What social-emotional learning is, is how do you actually engage with and figure out who you are in that world? So, things like social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and problem-solving, and relationships, those are all different SEL competencies. So, it is gonna be lifespan, across the lifespan, pre-K through 12. It's also something that we make a really good case for. You do need to teach it explicitly, and at the same time, it's very well embedded in learning. All learning that happens is social-emotional in context, is how our brains work. And so, it already exists in so many phenomenal places in the district, so I'm excited to learn where they are and what they look like. So, that's me in a nutshell. So, I wanted to speak briefly about the Safe and Supportive Schools work that has been taking place in Arlington. As Dr. Bodie alluded to, there's a nice little timeline here. And I had the privilege of being able to work with the district back in the 2015-16 school year when the district received an Arlington Education Foundation grant from -- to work precisely on SASS, which was great, as a district. So, there was a team of about 30 or so people, and they were representative of all different levels, all different roles. We had teachers, administrators, TAs. It was a really good group, specialists. And we went through the state's behavioral health self-assessment tool for schools, which is a really nice way of just looking at the six major functions of schools. Every school has them. So, leadership, professional development, access to resources and services, academic and non-academic supports, policies, procedures, protocols, and family collaboration. Basic six main functions of what every school does. But then to go through it and audit, how do you use those functions to create safe and supportive school environments? And so, we went through the questions as a district team, came up with some really lovely recommendations, and then were able to move it forward to -- one of the recommendations was, wow, this work is really great at the district, but we also need to ask these questions of our own buildings, because each building has a different set of strengths, different set of challenges. And so, the team made a recommendation that they do it at the building level. So, that was followed up the following year with an application in the fall of 2016 when Arlington applied for the state funds through a grant program there for safe and supportive schools. And Arlington was actually awarded the largest grant in the entire state, about $30,000 or so, and the majority of the schools participated, which was phenomenal. They each had and created Safe and Supportive Schools teams. They went through the self-assessment at their school level, came up with a set of recommendations for themselves, which now exist as action plans for building a safe and supportive school. So, that was happening in the spring of 2017. Now, here we are in the fall of 2017, and one of the recommendations from the team back in 2015-16 was, maybe we should get some leadership on board to look at some of this work. So, a couple of years later, it was able to happen, and here I am. So, now, I've gotten to come in and take a hold of those recommendations, the self-assessments, plans, and put them together in some kind of a cohesive manner. So, a lot of building principals, they have their school improvement plans, they have their Safe and Supportive School action plans, they have the district goals. And what we have been striving to do this year is to help district and building leadership see where you can start to interweave some of these elements. So, instead of having a separate Safe and Supportive Schools action plan, we've been working with the principals to help them embed the elements that they wanted to achieve into their school improvement plans. Now, obviously, they still have to go through the whole process with their school councils to get them approved, but we are in a really nice position where every school has an element of their Safe and Supportive School action plan embedded within their school improvement plan, which is fantastic. It also does a really nice job of then creating space for staff in any of the buildings to dedicate their professional learning time towards executing those action plans or the goals as they show up in the school improvement plan. So, it's a really nice model, and I'm doing a great job with it. And that's what we're gonna continue to work on this year. So, then, how do we execute it? Once we've figured out where the rubber hits the road for each individual school, and then how that impacts the district, how do we start carrying them out and then looking for through lines in between to make the work sustainable and build capacity in every building? So, that's what we're working on. Back in 2016, the district came up with this plan as a part of their Safe and Supportive Schools action plan, and it was to develop and implement the district-level leadership team that's gonna give that vision support and the integration, a lot of what I just spoke about. The nice thing is that we've already started on this by moving the work into the district goals, moving the work into the school improvement goals. And so, we're in the process of figuring out how those recommendations from a couple of years ago align with the landscape now, in the present time in Arlington. So, that's what we're working on. I wanted to give you a snapshot. There should be a full page of this in your packet, I believe, too. And this is each of the schools. So, starting at Monomy and then moving up to Addison, the high school was only -- they didn't participate in the first round of self-assessments, so we don't have data on them at the moment. And Brackett and Thompson, we're still working on it, so we only have half of their scores at the moment. But this is what I wanted to show you. You'll notice the different colors, the six categories there are the six categories of the self-assessment tool. Now, this is, it's a little unfair, totally upfront, to put them side by side, because they're self-assessments done by each individual team. You didn't have one team go around to each building and hold them to the same set of standards, okay? So, it's really much more appropriate to look at them individual sets. Like, I don't want people to look at Brackett and make judgments about that. The Brackett team was scoring themselves against themselves, right? The Bishop team was doing the same there. What I do, though, for me, is to take a look at this and see where are the through lines and what are the common threads that are popping up as a low spot or a high spot on every building's self-assessment, regardless of what their median scores might be. And so, you'll notice, at a quick glance, the two blue categories are pretty low consistency, and we're looking at leadership and professional development tends to be a bit of a trend across the district. It was also low in the district-wide self-assessment. So, looking at that, we've been dedicating our energies towards helping leadership and creating PD opportunities to figure out how do we continue to build safe and supportive environments across all levels. So, that's to give you some of the data behind why we're taking the steps that we are now, why we're moving in that direction, and how we're encouraging principals to continue to work with their teams to take on the mantle of the Safe and Supportive Schools charge as a part of their leadership team, hence embedding it into their school improvement plans. Other things you should feel really excited about, though, are a lot of the sweet spots that are pretty high. You know, looking at Addison, looking at Pierce and Bishop and Monomy and Hardy, they have some really nice family collaboration, they've got some really solid procedures and protocols, there's a lot of good work that's going on. So, it's also very encouraging to see that. I'll leave it on here, and then just ask if folks have any questions, because that was really my last slide for questions, but in case people want to be able to refer to that data.
Any questions? Yep, Lynn.
I was hoping to get some insight onto what is in the action plans. Is it possible to get a summary of, or are there some common themes that are across all the action plans that you could share with us, or?
There are. The common themes are actually the two weak spots that we identified. So, professional development and leadership tends to be the common theme. Every single building has professional development built into their action plan. What we are trying to do as well this year is that, at the time that they created their action plans, there was no Director of Social-Emotional Learning, there was no district cohesion to it, it was a lot of folks working independently in groups. So, each person has a slight, each team has a slightly different PD plan. So, part of what we're trying to do is go back and refine those to find what was the goal or the objective of this team and of that team, and is there a common professional development or training opportunity we could provide, and then give access to everybody, not just Bishop because they asked for it, or Addison because they had a relationship with somebody, but rather, how do we make sure everybody has access to it, high school included, too? So, we're in the midst of working on that with the teams, and hopefully coming to some really promising opportunities for training. The other piece was the ongoing leadership. Every team requested ongoing supports to be able to have their Safe and Supportive School team continue to meet. The teams felt extremely confident that they could do this work, that they wanted to leverage their strengths, that they knew the culture and the climate of their building, and they were excited to dive into it. But once the grant funding ends, it ends, and so it's how do we continue? Now, the good news is that we applied for continuation funding, which was really great. There are two categories in the state grant program. One of them is the self-assessment category, another one is the action plan. So, we were able to apply for action planning grants for all of these buildings for this year. We won't find out until mid-November, I believe, but I think we had a strong application, so we'll see how it goes. And there are not many schools applying for the action plan category. There are many going for self-assessments, so we're kinda ahead of the curve on that, which is nice. So, those are the two major areas, the leadership of the team and the professional development were the major themes.
Great, thank you.
In the action plans, yeah. It's a great question, thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, for our parents at home, what they could expect the experience of their student, how it would be different after this is all implemented?
That's a beautiful question, thank you. It's going to, at the risk of sounding cliche, it's gonna depend on how their building decides to execute on their action plans, but the one common theme that parents should be able to expect is that, in the everyday language and consideration of the teachers and the TAs and the administration and the specialists, is going to be, how are we as adults creating and fostering environments that are going to be able to allow students, regardless of how they're showing up on that day, regardless of what's going on in their life, it's going to be safe and accessible, and that we acknowledge your learning only happens when you're there and available to learn. And there are a number of different things that we can do to make that happen, from physical environments to making sure our curriculum is going to meet you where you're at, to the way that we engage with you and the language that we speak, the expectations we set around how we conduct ourselves. It's gonna manifest differently depending on the grade level, depending on the programs of each building, the values of each building, the language will be different. But parents should be able to expect, as we continue to get better at this, because we're still working on getting better as the adults, that adults are going to absolutely consider, first and foremost, do I have students that feel safe, available, ready, and turned on for learning?
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a great question, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I want to ask a question.
Please.
Staffing, do you have enough staffing to implement a plan?
Do you have enough staffing to implement a plan? Yeah, the plan is great because it doesn't rely on external staffing. It uses the people that are already there. Because ultimately, when you create a safe and supportive environment, everybody who's a part of that environment contributes to creating that sense of safety and welcoming and belonging. What there definitely has been a request for has been ongoing funding for the existing staff to get better at what they're doing, to make sure it's shared out with all of their colleagues. So, when I think about the previous question about what can parents expect, there's a piece in the back of my head that's now questioning going through each building, huh, have the representatives on the Safe and Supportive Schools teams been able to sufficiently take this knowledge and share it out with their team? So, if there's a representative from the first grade, the second, the third, and so on, have they had time to meet as a grade-level team to share their knowledge, to get feedback from their grade-level team, and then bring it back to their leadership team? It's this continuous feedback of learning and growing. And we have some of that space in our professional development time, but we, if you look at the elementary calendar, there isn't dedicated time to spend for this topic. So, it's a matter of how principals are gonna take that on. Are they gonna make that part of their leadership team agenda, how they already hold leadership team meetings, or is it something that's an additional piece? And so, we've been really asking the principals to think about, what's the way that this can become sustainable and not solely reliant on grant funding? Does that mean that you embed it into something and that exists, or that you secure additional funding for them to meet? And so, each team is taking that on in a different way.
How dependent is this program on grant funding? How is it?
It's been fairly related to grant funding over the last couple of years, because we use the funding to pay for stipends. A lot of the meeting time occurred after school, and I think there was some meeting with some
Over the summer, yeah.
Summertime as well. And as we go forward, it's the same issue. In a couple of instances, the funding will also provide, in a couple of schools, they're looking at some outside support, and that would help pay some of those fees as well.
Because we've been talking about this for a long time, so I wouldn't want to see it go away.
I know.
Grant funding went away.
Yep.
So, I just want to know what the thinking is.
The thinking is, we're gonna make it work.
Love that.
This is a high priority.
It got on the record, so it's
There you go.
Just like we're looking at responsive classroom training again next summer, and that's a huge commitment, but we're gonna figure out how to make it work.
Okay. I just, I'm always worried about a program that's, when people come for us and they say it's grant-funded, I'm just worried about its sustainability beyond the grant, so.
And I appreciate that greatly. I've managed a lot of grants, mostly to do this work, and I do realize it's precarious depending on how much ability there is to maintain the funding. I also know, so I'm a member of the State Commission for Safe and Supportive Schools, and so I know about the funding, and I'm part of the lobbying to make sure that that line item at the state level is always funded. It has not always been funded. There has been a year that their funding was cut despite everyone's best hopes, and in years like that, even if we were awarded, there was no funding coming. So, it's also precarious because of the nature of state funding, and so just to be mindful of, we can rely on and use and leverage other pieces, and we should think about how do we embed this into what we do on a daily basis? How do we make sure that it's not contingent even on stipends? So, how do we think of embedding it into what we do every day?
And we just need to mention that AEF has been incredibly generous and supported the vast majority of this work, because the grants from the AEF have initially, as you said, funded the initial exploration. They offset the state grant that we received, and we are applying for another cycle for this year through AEF.
With AEF. And AEF has been very collaborative with us and trying to make sure that this is something that moves forward. Thank you for that. So, it sounds like there's, at this point, there's a lot of work being done at the building level, and people are sort of branching out and coming for that plan. Is there an opportunity for people to get back together, to sort of share what worked and didn't work? Is that through you? Is there sort of a definite plan for that? It's a great question. I don't have an elegant answer. I can tell you what I'm thinking and what other people have been thinking. Arlington's taken on a number of really heavy subjects, one of them being cultural competency this year. And at the risk of overtaxing all of the folks who work in the district, we are trying to stay away from a cultural competency team, a Safe and Supportive Schools team, a social-emotional learning team, a safety team, you know? We're trying to think about, how can we be intentional so that we're continuing to get better in what we're doing in terms of cultural competency, and at the same time, not lose the connections and the overlap with these other areas? Because if you do have a safe and supportive environment, you have taken cultural competency into consideration, right? So, at the present time, I've been really spending my time and energy auditing all of the plans to see what folks are, have in common, what they need and want, and also observing what's going on with cultural competency in the district to see where is the opportunity, if it's not this moment in time, where is it? Is it next month? Is it the month after? For us to have those opportunities to come together. The other good news is that since every building administrator and special education administrators and directors and coordinators of curriculum are all working on the same goals, anytime that we have an administrative meeting, you have all of those people in the room already. And I can tell you, our agendas have reflected the work of cultural competency in Safe and Supportive Schools. So, the nice thing is that the conversation is still happening. We just need to figure out what is the most optimal means for that to take place. It's a great question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you all for having me.
Our next presenter is Marilyn Salvis, who's gonna talk to us about the Buffer Zone report.
I wanted to introduce to the committee Marilyn Salvis, who is new to the district this year. She is one of, she is our new data specialist. She comes to us from years of working both at Norfolk Agricultural School and Watertown Public Schools, in which you had a fairly long career there. So, we feel very fortunate to have her, and it has been, it's been terrific, as we have to delve into a lot of numbers, and this is something she enjoys doing. She has also taken on the role of registrar, which was a lot to take on. Fortunately, it was a little bit later in the season when things started to die down a little bit. But we welcome her, and tonight, she's going to present the Buffer Zone report, which is something that we have done in the past as part of the policy to have an update on where we are. And I'll let her speak to it. We were also going to have the discipline report tonight, but data warehouse at DUCI is down. They haven't really uploaded any of the data that was submitted to them this summer, so we're basically on a wait-hold until we get that. But Ms. Salvis has also graciously agreed to come back again when we have that data.
Okay, well, I had never heard of a buffer zone before I got here.
Neither did we.
And I was here for a couple of weeks before I knew what it was. So, how do I? Okay. So, basically, as you all know, you have school zones where the students could go to one or another school. You also have some open enrollment opportunities where people say, you know, I really want to be in that other school, so they apply to the superintendent to be able to move to the other school. So, this year, there were 133 people that applied as new students that live inside the buffer zones. In the online application, when they go in, they put in their address, and it says, this is the zone where you live. And then they get to pick a first school and a second school, and then a decision is made as to where the student is going to attend. And a lot of times, what will happen is, there'll be other siblings that have already, you know, started on a path down the other schools, or there'll be reasons that they, the parents want to stay in one of the other schools. And those decisions are made up here in the superintendent's office. Then, we go back into the computers and say, okay, they get their first school or their second school. And that is what this preferred school refers to. Now, I guess kindergarten registrations opens in March. In between March and September, a number of people changed their minds, you know? I really wanted to go to Brackett, but can you get me into Bishop? So, even though these say that 54 out of 95 students got their preferred school, what that means is, school one was the first thing that was selected on the computer for them. It's not necessarily where they ended up, because a lot of parents changed their minds, and then the question came back up. So, if you, if you look at these numbers strictly and then look at the other screens that I'm gonna be showing you, you say, hmm. And the superintendent and I sat and looked at these together, and she was like, how does that, how can that be right? And again, this is right based on the software, but life doesn't always follow exactly what you put in the computer. So, this is very hard to read. This is the second slide here. And this says, what buffer zone the students came in, you know, where their address was, and where they actually ended up going to school. And for this slide, I used, you know, reality. We checked their address where they lived and made sure that we had the right buffer zone, and then where they're actually sitting down and taking classes. So, these numbers might not necessarily match the first screen. So, of the 11 students that were in Bishop Brackett, five went to Bishop and six went to Brackett. Down on Bishop Thompson, we've got two in Bishop, one in Dalen, one in Stratton, and two in Thompson. So, in that buffer zone, there were some people who had other preferences. And so, we went down through each of the students that were in the buffer zones and indicated where they would end up, you know, going to school, where they are actually sitting and they're taking attendance. The next screen here, this is just a different representation of the same, you know, what zone they're in and where they are. Any questions on any of this? The next screen here, this is the students that were assigned based on where a sibling was already going, and there were 27, you can't see it down in the corner there, 27 students that already had a sibling in one school, and so they went to an out-of-area or actually, they got a choice based on that. So, the screen that shows my love for data, which you didn't have one of these last year, is the last page in the presentation, and that is the class sizes for each of the schools that exist today. The white is what's happening in the classrooms today, and the yellow is what the projected class sizes would have been had every student gone to the school that they were originally assigned to. So, if their original assignment before buffer zones was Bishop, they're in the no-BZ Bishop column, the no buffer zone. So, zone. So, there are actually more people in Bishop than were originally in the buffer zone, but that's because somebody from another district, you know, got in there. I'm looking at the fifth grade. So, I think that this shows some interesting things about your, your overall town.
Make a couple of the comments. I, I, this is, this, this kind of comparison is what this committee has been looking for. In grades one to five, you don't see much deviation really in class sizes. Where the deviation occurs is at the kindergarten level. And it varies from year to year. This year, we see, we, we see some differences, and I think you can see what the implications would be. For example, at one school, if the, if the numbers were actually simply by the number of students that were in that district, that we would have had to have a fourth class. So, some of the strategy in deciding where students would go was really, that was one of the issues, as well as trying to keep the class sizes as even as possible. There's variability from year to year. I would say this year, we certainly were able to keep some class sizes a little bit more even, but nothing, last year seemed to be an anomaly in terms of how well everything got distributed. It's not as well distributed this year. I think that we had some surprises in terms of where the pressures were this year. Last year, we saw a lot of activity in the Thompson-Harty area, but this year, the, the changes and the increases were really in the Brackett, Dalen, and Pierce schools. And as you can see, when you look at Thompson-Harty, you really don't see a whole lot of variation there. But there, there certainly was on the west side of town.
Would, would there have been room for a fourth classroom at Dalen either this year or the next year?
The answer was no, without taking away an art room. So, that was actually part of the issue, is that as we saw the numbers going, we knew that we could have a fourth classroom at Brackett, but not without sacrificing common specialist space to have one at, at Dalen. And that's just because of, when you look at the Dalen, you'll see there's some classes of three, some at four. And so, that, that's one of the issues.
That, that's kind of, when you look at, I, I like this chart. Thank you very much for giving it to us because it's something that we've wanted for a while.
She says she loved doing this, too.
It is. It's what we've been asking for, for years. You look at the numbers, and the Dalen setup begs quite, you know, it, you could fix it if you had four classrooms there. But if you can't shoehorn them into the building either now or as the students mature and go into first and second grades, then it, that doesn't make sense. And I think that's, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. I mean, there was a concatenation of kids over towards the Brackett, so that you added a fourth class there, but you didn't need a fourth class at the, the Dalen. And if you didn't have the buffer zones, it, we might have had the situation where we would have needed four classes at both buildings. So, it, it appears that from the yellow and white chart, that you're moving, you know, the biggest impact of the buffer zones this year was moving kids out of Dalen. And, and that makes sense if you had the space in the building to do it. The, you know, we're asking for this report basically for a couple of reasons. Reason number one, as a matter of public policy, are the buffer zones working? Are they the right size? Should we be expanding them? Should we get rid of some? We want to inform our decision as whether or not the system is working and we should maintain it the way it is, or make some sort of change or tweak. So, that's research question number one. Research question number two, which I really can't answer from this report, is, would, would be to take, where did the parent want to go versus where they ended up? So, that if you're in, I, I live in the Thompson-Bishop zone. So, the people in my little neighborhood, do they all ask for the Thompson? Do they all ask for the Bishop? And do the people who went to the Thompson, did they get the Thompson? Do the people who asked for the Bishop get the Bishop? And who, is, is there something systemic about a school where either everybody's trying to get to and they're being told no? Or, you know, I want to see if, if there's a pattern exists in the people who are not getting their first choice school. Now, backing that down one level, you said that parents changed their mind. So, that if that were to happen, my expectation would be the report would reflect where they changed their mind to. If they say, you're saying if they asked for Brackett, and then all of a sudden, they say, "No, no, wait a minute. We, we thought about this differently. We want the Bishop." And you put them in the Bishop, they're going away happy, we're happy that they're happy, everybody's happy. So, we don't report that as a discrepancy. We'll report that as a success because the parent is happy. That's what we're looking to measure, not what was put on the application form in the first instance. So, you could see that for the next time.
Right. Well, I want, I, I hope that this year, you know, I, I came in mid-September.
Well, I understand that. Let, let me finish my sentence. Let me finish my sentence here. I know you're new, and you've never done this before. You never saw a buffer zone before you hit this. We struggled with this because redistricting is dancing on the third rail of school committee work. It's the worst thing you can have to do. So, it, it, it's a touchy subject for us. And you don't know our history. And you can't, we cannot expect you to come in here in two weeks and understand all our history and all the subtle nuances. So, what I'm saying is, this is a great chart. This tells me something important. For the next time, I'm just sort of explaining why the committee wants this report. Why is it so essential to us? So, that as you're going forward and as you're thinking about it, and you're going through the registration process next year and looking at what's happening, you sort of know the critical points for us. So, you can come in here next year with the knowledge of where we're coming from and be able to, to sail through knowing exactly what we want. Because, look, I do what you do in a lot of cases. And if I don't have an idea of what the Lowell School Committee wants, it drives me nuts. And I'm sure you had no idea what was in our heads right now. And, and I appreciate that. And I know you did a lot of hard work and found that to be fun. I'd find that to be fun, too. It really is. And it's good work, and you're really being thoughtful and, and analytical about it. But all I'm doing now is just sort of giving you the perspective and the nuance of how we got here, what we're thinking, and sort of the questions we're looking to answer as a result of the data. So, so that as the consumers of the data, you're the publisher, you have a better idea of, of why we're do, why we're making you go through this process. That's all. And I'm appreciative of the work.
Okay. Well, what, what I'm, what I was trying to say when we were looking back at this slide here where it says 54 out of 95 got their preferred school, I went back down and looked at those people that didn't get their preferred school. And very often, the parent's preferred school was edited. So, now, is that they're in school two means that they didn't get the right school, but the, their school one was edited to be school two. So, we're gonna, next year, we're gonna keep a better handle on getting that information from parents so that we can answer the other question and maybe have, you know, three columns, you know?
Yeah, that's all I can ask. That's all I can ask is to have an understanding of what we're sort of looking.
We want to wrap this up at about five minutes. Go to Jennifer, then.
Oh, so first, I just want to thank you for coming to our district. We, on School Committee, like data, so nice to have somebody who also likes data. But I also wanted to ask the superintendent through the chair to give a report to us about whether we need to adjust the buffer zones in the next few years. You know, I think we need a year to do that process. So, we just need to have a sense of, are we okay for now? Or, you know, does it make sense? And, and it is always a very stressful thing, but slight adjustments may not be as stressful as what we did a few years ago, so.
Well, last year, as you know, I said I thought it was working well. This year, I'm not so sure it's working as well. And I think that's how it's going to be. It's definitely something we should take a look at, particularly when we have pressure on some buildings with respect to, to classrooms. When we look at Dalen, you can see the three and the fours. We have three, we have three leaving the fifth grade. If we have four, you know, we need to, we, the, the number of leaving the fifth grade tells us what our classroom situation is. And that's what makes it so uncertain. Some schools will have a more of a capacity to absorb more students. Certainly, Thompson and Dalen will, Hardy will with these additions down the road. Stratton will have some ability. Pierce will have a little bit of ability. So, it's now taking a look at, to see where this is. But I agree with you. If we change it, it would not be next year. It would have to be the year after.
Right.
But I, I want to add one more comment. We actually do, I think, have it broken down by each individual buffer zone, how many wanted, say, Thompson, the Thompson-Bishop one, how many wanted Thompson, how many wanted Bishop. And that, that's data that we could disaggregate. I mean, if that was really something that the committee wanted to see, because that, that would, because you actually had to do a little bit of that anyway, to do the aggregate data.
That's what I'm saying. That was, that was the data that was changed in sometimes multiple times.
Yeah. And I will also add to those comments that, because we, we handle all this up in, in my office. We have people who will say they want to be on a wait list. And then when we call in July and say, "Well, the enrollment has shifted. Would you like to go now to the other school? Wasn't your fir-" I would say, almost all do not change. So, that's an interesting point as well because they, they've already talked about it with their child. They've gotten used to the idea. We, we've had very few. And the one time I can think of this summer, it did, it had everything to do with babysitting.
Here's your last question. Go ahead.
Yeah. I think what we're talking about here is the difference between the initially preferred school, which is what this number is, and then the preferred school, which is how closely the school that the child goes to matches with the final choice. And that would be a number that, I'd, I'd actually like to see both of them because it's helpful to know what kind of slippage there is in that and stuff. But does that, and, and I think that's how we want to separate them out, is initially preferred, and, and then the other one is preferred. And to know which, if we're talking about doing school-to-school comparisons, I think that you'd want to go with just the preferred, you know, the, the final choice for those kind of things, not the initial.
Okay, Lynn. Quick, quick question. So, so, if I recall, 56% is much lower than last year. And I assume that there was equal, equal amount of last-minute changes last year. So, do we have a sense of whether that was, a lot of people shut out of Dalen? That doesn't account for all of it? Couldn't, couldn't possibly account for all of it? Is there, were there, was there any pattern of why we couldn't get people their first choice that you could recognize?
A lot of it's timing. When we start in March, we have a, we have a spread on enrollment. Then we get to May, and we have another spread. And that's, that always is shifting sands all the time. And there were some surprises. I mean, the, the Pierce third kindergarten was a big surprise, both in terms of our projections and McKibben projections. So, what happens is, you know, you get to June, and you go, "Oh, this has shifted." And I, I told that person they, they couldn't do that. So, you call them up, and then they decided, no, they're going to stay there with, with what they had. Or, in very few cases, do they change. So, it's, it's, it's a function of that. And I'm not sure how predictable, given how enrollments have been going over the last few years in the summer, to really get on top of that beyond what we're doing.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Glad you, glad you came tonight. I'm sure we'll see you again. All right. Welcome. The next person, no, the next person's the superintendent, is going to talk about the teacher assistant placement issue. So, glad you guys stayed to hear this presentation.
To talk about, you know, when we do TA assistance. Well, we have a fundamental distribution of teaching assistants for every elementary school. And, and in the two largest schools, there's an additive one because of the size of the school. So, the question really is, how are we, how do we decide when we add a large-class TA, or when do we add a full-time at kindergarten? The major reason is enrollment. Now, in fact, just this, just this last week, we finally had a tipping point in a class at Thompson. And we're now, we're now adding a large-class TA at that grade to be shared among, among the teachers. That's the most important one. But then, there's also situations where, where the composition of the class in terms of the number of IEPs or the amount of support, somebody, a student that would have an IEP requires that we have at least another additional adult in the room. It doesn't mean that, that a particular student or a group of students have a one-to-one. That's not, it's really, it's really the dynamics of that. And it's a judgment call on the part of the principal on which we discuss it. So, those are really the two major decision points. We had to, one of our parents tonight talked about a change. Well, we also had a change in a student as well. And, you know, that sort of, you get to these sort of tipping points in the decision-making that goes on with respect to adding teaching assistants. I don't think there's any elementary principal who would not love to have full-time kindergarten teaching assistants or any kindergarten teacher. But it's really an issue that has, you've gone through the process, everyone on this committee, many times we go through budget priorities. And there are a number of things that we end up not funding, not because we don't think they're worthwhile. It's just that other things, that particular year, have a higher priority. So, I will say, one thing that happened last year is, just in terms of trying to make the numbers work, we probably didn't include enough, enough reserved teaching assistants. I'll have to do a count in how, in terms of how many we've actually added since, you know, over, over and above. I haven't done that, but we can get that data as we get into budget season. Because I think that's an important number to look at. Actually, Mr. Spiegel may have a better idea off the top of his head, but maybe, I shouldn't put him on the spot like this.
You know, it, there's a few more, but there's still some unfilled positions still. So, that's.
And that's another issue, too.
That's the other challenge, is filling some of these positions. And we're still trying to fill some.
Yeah. But one of the resources we do have, and particularly at Thompson-Harty, is when we have the after-school program, and we often can have teaching assistants come from our after-school teachers. So, that has worked out well there. In fact, this, this recent hire is in that, is in that situation. So, those are the, those are the decision points in terms of what the numbers would be. When a kindergarten hits 25, I mean, that is a number that I just, you know, you have to have more support in that classroom. And so, those are the, those are the, those are the major factors.
Can I share, can I share the stuff? Okay. So, Budget Subcommittee was tasked at our last school committee meeting to find out the number of TAs and what the cost would be to increase all TAs in kindergarten to full-time. And the, you have this handout in your thing. I just.
It's in the back.
It's there.
Oh, it's paper.
It's there. Yeah, it's not in your packet. It was on your desk because I forgot. And then my printer wasn't working. So, this is excerpted out of this Subcommittee notes, or Subcommittee minutes. The numbers were supplied by Mr. Denizio. The numbers were supplied by Mr. DiNizio, and we looked at how much a full-time aides would cost for all classes. He ran through us, ran through the numbers with us. There's 24 sections of kindergarten, six have full-time aides, not including special education. Eighteen would need an additional half-time aide. The additional half-time aide would cost $8,844. The total is around $160,000 for all 18. And then what he is not including in that amount is the benefit package, which would be added, because at this, as half-time aides, they aren't subject to benefits, and they would become subject to benefits. So that's actually, that's a big chunk of money that we're not talking, or we're talking about, but we don't have on the paper here. And then other things that came up in our discussion were that Dr. Boddy was going to talk to principals who are requesting, to see if they're, they can request building or TAs or subs to help with the classrooms, and to see if the teachers are saying that this is an issue. And we also asked that you would find out which kindergarten, which schools are doing kindergarten math in the afternoon.
Most are doing in the afternoon, but it's around 11:30. The kindergarten generally has the first lunch, so it's, it's after lunch that we're doing math.
So this is after the half-time aide goes home?
Correct.
Okay. So we did not choose to make any motions about this, but we did gather the data and bring it to you.
Cindy then, Bill. Cindy, you join us.
Yeah, so when you weren't here last week, Kathy, one of the things we talked about is that it used to be that we could keep kindergarten sizes to less than 20, and that was kind of what our goal was. And with enrollment, we haven't been able to do that. In addition, over the last couple of years, we've seen huge uptick in curriculum requirements in kindergarten. So not only the, whatever the mind.
Tools.
Tools of the mind. There we go. Boy, tools of the mind and math. Both now are much more rigorous and much more, so those three things, the fact that there are more students in our kindergarten classes, and then the rigor of the curriculum, we were starting to think that, I know that, you know, this year might not be possible to put many more of these full-time aides in, but I think that we really, given that, that it almost has to be a minimum next year, that there are two people in each classroom for kindergarten, especially if the numbers are over 20. And given that most of our classrooms are over 20, that we really, kindergarten is just a much different beast than it used to be. I think that we could, we used to be able to do it with one teacher and up to 20 kids. But now where our classrooms due to enrollment are so large, and the curriculum is so different, that we really need to rethink this for next year's budget and for next year's, because I just, I don't think that, I don't think that we're, we're doing right by, by these kids, so I just want to put in a push for that.
Forty years ago, when I started teaching and got my masters in early childhood, the requirement of a kindergarten teacher was doing an enormous amount of assessment throughout the whole year, dealing with the physical, emotional, and cognitive abilities of a child in making recommendations. All that assessment required one-on-one, because you could never do it in a group situation and get valid assessment. The past 10, 15 years, we have literally taken the first-grade curriculum and pushed it into the, into the kindergarten. This adds another whole degree of assessments, which we have done fairly well in this community, and done well in math and in reading. The only way that can be done at the primary level is on a one-on-one basis. The fact that everything that Ms. Stark said is absolutely tantamount, it's increased. I recognize the budget, but let's consider the budget. The earlier we recognize problems cognitively, specialized in anything, the quicker we can remediate them, and the cheaper it is in the long run. It's an initial cost, there's no question about it, but to me, it's a financial, if nothing else, aside from the educational and emotional and social part of the child, the economic part is a strong, good investment. Do it early and pay less in the long run. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic?
Yeah, so something I didn't address with this, because it's a little bit sideways, was that we also had parents come from the first grade at Bishop, and they were very concerned, because they had no TAs, and their class sizes are 26, 26, and 25. Or they have one.
They have one.
No.
No Bishop.
That's Bishop.
Oh, okay.
That's first grade Bishop. Pierce is also high.
We had first-grade parents here from the Pierce as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had both.
Okay. So that's another issue. They don't have tools. I don't know when they're teaching math, but they don't have, or they have very little support in terms of aides, and that, that was a concern, again, for kids who are really on the very young edge of the age spectrum at school, and perhaps not as well-behaved as they do as they get older.
It's not as though there are not other aides in the building, and principals do deploy them when they, there is a situation where they feel they need more support. Each one of the special education teachers at a school has a TA that they work with. So in a school that has three special education teachers, there are three TAs. So you, you have three, six adults that are working in classrooms. The special education teachers, of course, do have pullouts, but our thrust is more inclusion, and Ms. Elmer is here, and she can talk a little bit more about that if you want more information. But we also have a building sub in each building, and two of the schools bracket in Dallin, we have two, because of their size. And again, these, these people are deployed as needed. Am I saying, I think in the ideal world, none of our elementary school classrooms should be over 20. I mean, that would be the ideal. First of all, if we did that, we would need a lot more classrooms than we currently have. I think that we could think about, as we get into budget season, looking at this issue. But if you look at the chart, you'll see that there's still some classrooms, just by happenstance, they weren't necessarily like this in July, that are under 20. And so it may be that we, we think about new guidelines, not with that, not that we put them in policy, but more we put them in practice for next year, in terms of what we would do with, whether we'd have additional TAs at kindergarten.
Jennifer?
So I'd be interested in, in hearing, when we get into the next budget season, whether administrators and teachers would prefer more building-level subs, or more, you know, grade-level subs versus a, not sub, a TA, versus an additional TA that's dedicated to that classroom? Because it might be, I mean, given that kindergarten kids are in specialist part of the time in the afternoon, that having a grade-level full-time TA might meet people's needs, if it was scheduled right, in the right way. So I'd just be interested in hearing from teachers and administrators what would work best for them.
Yeah, we certainly can take a look at that, and Jason Levy is here tonight, and I'm sure that'll be a discussion among the teachers. Jason is our AEA president. Yeah, I think that that's very worthwhile. Also, putting in the, in the context of the aggregate, we have more teaching assistants now than we've had in the last few years. So it's not as though we haven't been investing in it, it's just that it's been more strategic in looking at those kind of guidelines. But as Ms. Stark was saying, well, one of the issues are enrollment is growing, and that is, that's factual.
I've just got to say, I don't want us to, in our thinking in this, in our planning for this, not to mix, in my mind, apples with oranges. There's an absolute need for a special ed teaching assistance, but they are there mainly to support an IEP that's been, been, you know, requirement. And if they're not 100% with the child, yes, sometimes they're able to serve the general population, but you can't be, you can't depend on that all the time.
Right.
So we have to, going forward, and I appreciate you suggesting, looking forward into the future budget, but we need to keep it clear in our head. And the idea, we have a lot of teaching assistants, yes, but it's not, in my mind, what is necessary to keep this program at the quality it is going forward.
So we're, okay.
And I just think that, as we move forward, we just, we have to keep in mind that, yes, enrollment, we have, we're having a lot of issues with enrollment, obviously, and you're right, and we, adding a TA is so much cheaper than adding another classroom. And in some places, we don't have classrooms to, we don't have space. So as we have these class sizes getting this large, we really have to think about, like you said, guidelines for all grades, right, for all, all of our elementary levels. If we hit a certain point, they should have a full-time TA in that classroom, regardless, I mean, kindergarten especially, because they are so unable to do most things for themselves. But, you know, at certain sizes, I mean, a classroom of 28, 27? You can't imagine an elementary class that doesn't have two teachers with that many kids in it, you know? I mean, that, that's just unheard of. And we really have to make sure that as we move forward in this budget, that we, next, or the next budget, that we really, we have to budget for that. We have to make sure that we have enough hands in the classroom, or there is no education. You know, we can have all the safe and supportive schools, but this is not a supportive environment when there's 27 little kids and there's one teacher, right? They just, they don't get any time. They don't, there's no way we can handle those.
Lynn, quickly.
Sure. So I just want to focus on, on this year for a little bit. So I think part of the reason we have the kindergarten issue, but part of the reason we're getting parents from other grades, is probably because their principals are saying, there's nothing I can do. So we did ask you to talk to the principal, and I'd ask you to continue to talk to them to find out, you know, at Pierce, grade one, there's two classes of 25. They don't have a TA there. At Dallin, in grade five, it's classes of 26 and 25. Yes, they've got two building TAs, but are there issues there? So I'd ask you to continue to talk to the principals, be open about adding TAs, because, like Cindy just said, adding a TA here and there is going to, you know, is going to help a lot where we cannot, where there's just no way we can add additional classrooms. So I would ask you to continue to have that conversation and be, you know, as liberal as you can with additional TAs this year. Thank you.
I just wanted to review to make sure I understand. So for, for TAs, you've mentioned that, so we've added, I'm looking at the chart that we were given on NOVAS. So you said that there's been a full-time TA added to Stratton, so that's not on this chart, correct?
On which chart are you looking at?
The Omen.
One that was in.
Yeah, the one that was on our.
Oh, no, that's probably not, not there, because that was just recent.
Okay, so.
And then we had just added one at Thompson.
Okay, and these are shared between the classes?
The fourth grade one?
Yeah.
That's on there.
That's in there, okay. So that one's there.
That one's there.
Are there any other TAs that we've added that aren't on this chart?
I don't think so, but I don't know if.
Is there a Stratton on your chart?
So there was one Stratton kindergarten that had a full-time paid intern. So we do have a few people in the district who are coming either through Leslie or Wheelock as part of their program, or paid interns, and they're actually paid a little less than a full-time TA, because they're also, you know, getting credit for their program.
Right, but they're not the full-time TA that was added, that, that was being spoken about. I'm just trying to make sure I understand how many people, I mean.
It was not a full-time, it was additive of who was there.
Right, I mean, brought to full-time.
Brought to full-time.
Brought to full-time. That's, that's what I'm trying to say. So, so there, what I'm saying is, so now at Stratton, there should be one full-time regular TA, one half-time regular TA, and one paid intern full-time.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then you said there is a TA at Bishop for one of the classrooms? Or is it shared across the grade?
Shared across the grade.
So it's one, one shared across the 26, 26, and 25?
Correct.
And then there's no TAs at Pierce with 25 and 25 in first grade?
That's still under discussion.
Okay. But they have access to the building subs and stuff?
Right.
But the building subs are also off, okay.
I would say one thing, the principals are not shy about saying what they need. Yeah, but, but we, you know, we're looking at, you know, I don't think I've said no for a strongly argued TA this year.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to, I'm going to move on. Just one, the one question the parents had ultimately was, is there, are there, are there funds in the budget right now to hire more TAs over the course of the 2017-18 school year, this school year?
Mr. DiNizio.
That's the question. That's the ultimate question.
All right, well, you can answer it. Go ahead. Tell, we've talked about our, our situation.
I think, I think what you'll see when we review the report is that, in the personnel side of our budget, that we're already, at the end of September, over by about $100,000.
So we're over budget there? Okay. All right, thanks. There you have it. That's the question you wanted to answer tonight. Thanks very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the MCAS overview by Mr. McNeil.
Absolutely. Can I be quicker?
Yeah. So I want to start off by saying that this is an overview for the 2017 MCAS. I am going to come back at another time to give a deeper dive into the data, to let us know, to let, you know, where we need to focus some attention, and just, you know, it also gives me some time to work with our curriculum leaders and department heads in order to do some disaggregation of the data. We just got the results two weeks ago, and there really hasn't been that time to do that deep dive. So what, how I've set up the report is the objectives, that we're going to share some facts about the Next Generation MCAS 2.0, which was given last spring. We're going to talk about the accountability, what was reported about the accountability this year, and a sort of an explanation, try to give some interpretation of the, of the results. We're going to look at Arlington's district results as it, as it relates to the grade levels across the district, and then we're going to identify next steps that we're going to have in place in order to give that analysis of the data. So this last spring, the state administered the Next Generation MCAS 2.0, which is an updated version of the MCAS that has been in place for over 20 years. What was measured are critical thinking skills, application of knowledge, and the ability to make connections between reading and writing. And other important facts is that it was first given in this past spring in grades three through eight, and it will eventually replace the legacy MCAS, which is given in all grades. This past year, in Arlington, at Bishop and Pierce, they gave the, the computer-based test in three, four, and five. In grade four, it was given across the district, and at the middle school, it was given six through eight. But even though they were computer-based, it was the Next Generation, it was a version of the Next Generation of the 2.0. So it was designed as a computer-based test, but this past spring, there was an option to give it as a paper version, and that was given in three, in most grades, in grades three and five across the district. Pierce and Bishop are the only schools that gave it online in three, four, and five. And it was also given online in, in grades six, seven, and eight. So this is the district, the state, the, the schedule for implementation of the MCAS on the computer-based tests. So coming up this spring, we will be giving, in Arlington, we will again have Bishop and Pierce give it on, online in grades three, four, and five. But across the district, it will be given in grades four and five, again at the middle school, six through eight, and the high school will continue to take the legacy MCAS. The goal is by spring of 2019, that all grades will be given the Next Generation MCAS 2.0, and I'm not sure whether or not it's going to be online at the grade 10, but the, it will be the newer version. That's the goal. So what was reported this year at the high school level is, because they took the legacy MCAS, they received the same type of accountability report that they have in the past, however, and that includes the progress and performance index, as well as the dropout rates, graduation rates, and you can see up there, other indicators of the accountability that was reported out. And that's because they gave the older version of the MCAS. And that's because they gave the older version of the MCAS. And they did receive the accountability level of a one. So they're a level-one school again, and so kudos to the high school for good making, achieving that. So looking at the reporting beyond 2018, the results will serve as a baseline. And that's one thing that I want to emphasize tonight, is that the 2017 MCAS version, or the 2.0, will be a baseline for us to utilize, to look at various areas that we need to, that will need our attention. Because you, you know, because of its newness, and because it is a different version of the test, and I will touch upon this later on in the, in the, in my presentation, is that we are not to compare results. So from two thousand, so from our results from 2015, we're not gonna compare them to the results that we had in 2017 because it's a new test. And so as you see, and you'll understand why not as we move forward in the presentation. And then it gets some other facts about how the 2017 Next Generation results will not be a negative impact for future accountability. So in order to make sure that, because there was, because across the state and in Arlington, schools had the option of giving the paper-based test, the state did do some type of, they made sure that the scores from the online test, it did not hamper the student's performance if they took the paper-based test or the computer-based test. So they make sure that it was fair. And so they looked at different parts of the test to make sure that they were calibrating it, to make sure that the results weren't impacted because a student was taking it online. So one of the things that changed with the Next Generation test was the achievement levels. And before, in the old legacy test, you had advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. And in the Next Generation, you have exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And so these are the new achievement levels, and they come with an explanation. And one of the things that they put in partially meeting expectations, and we'll talk about this later on in the presentation, is that it's asking, when students, when parents receive the results, and we're gonna talk about the impact that it's gonna have because the state projected that there are gonna be some students that who performed proficient on the old test may have slipped down into the partially meeting expectations level. And the one thing that I want to make sure that, that I want to emphasize in my presentation is that I don't want parents to get alarmed by that. Because it's a more rigorous test, the standards were, they did a lot of work on the standards to make sure that they were aligned from one grade level to the next. So because of that, there may have been a little slippage for those students who performed in the proficient level on the old test. And then in the new test, they may have scored in a partially meeting expectations. So again, because at the elementary and the middle school level that they gave the Next Generation 2.0, the elementary schools and the middle schools across the state did not receive an accountability level this year. So as our high school did, the high schools did, because they gave the legacy test, the elementary and middle schools did not. However, we did receive growth percentiles by grade, by subject, and by school. And you'll see that when we, when I have a slide on there that shows Arlington's results, you'll see where the growth is included in those scores. So I want to talk a little bit about what parents are gonna see on their reports. And we do have the parent reports here now in the district. They were slated to be mailed out on the 24th to the districts. And so it is our responsibility now to give them to the schools so they can be handed out to the parents. And so parents, next week, will receive their reports. And so I'm gonna go through what is gonna be reported on that parent report. And as you can see up there, they're gonna receive the scaled score, an explanation of the achievement level, the range of scores. And that's one thing that the state took some time in deliberating on, is making sure that they have the cut scores right. So you're gonna see the cut scores on the parent report, and you're gonna see a comparison of the scaled score with the district and the state. And then they're gonna have an explanation of the performance in each, on each one of the strands within the content area. And so here's an example of a parent report. And as you can see, as I talked about it, you'll see the cut scores that separates the different achievement levels, and then you'll see the explanation of what it means when a child received this particular result. You'll see down here where you'll see the child's scaled score and how it's compared to the district and the state. And up here, naturally, it will tell in what level, achievement level that the student performed. And so here it is, when I talked about how it shows how each child performed within the content area and the different strands, this is something that parents can utilize to see exactly in what areas the child, their child did very well, and then what area that they probably need a little work in. And then at the bottom here of the report, they have the questions and how the student performed in each question. On the state website, there are released items. There probably is not as many as they've been in before because of the fact that it's a new test, and what they do is they recycle a lot of the items. And so however, they will have the descriptors on this DESI's website. And then at the end of the presentation, I will also have different resources that parents can access in order to get a further explanation of, you know, the results, and also be able to access those released items. So this is a question that many parents might have, is that if my child, why is my child performing not as well as they did last year? And like I talked about before, is that this Next Generation is more rigorous. There was a group of educators from Massachusetts that worked on aligning the standards from grade to grade. And we're gonna see how that impacted performance overall and how it has pretty much standardized how a student has performed. And you'll see how that works on a different chart, and I'll show that to you. But again, I want to stress, and also from through the state, that they're communicating that this is a baseline year. And so we have to utilize this to say, okay, this is what we're gonna utilize in order to focus our efforts going further in the future. We're gonna look at the standards, we're gonna look at our instruction, and we're gonna see what areas we need to focus our efforts. And then they also talk about how, you know, this year's results should not be compared to previous year's scores because of the difference in the test. So interpreting the tests, some of the things I've already talked about. But one of the things here, the second bullet, is again, we had this, when the MCAS was debuted in nineteen ninety-eight, in nineteen ninety-eight, you know, they utilized, that districts utilized it as a baseline. And so as we moved forward, we were able to adjust our instruction and utilize the results to inform our instruction in order to focus on those areas of need. However, the state projected that in certain grade levels, there would be more of a similar performance on the test, and that was in, in grade four in ELA and math, grade seven in math, that the expectations, meeting expectations would be similar to the proficient levels. And then other grades, such as grade eight, some of the, it's possible that students may have performed a little bit lower than what they have in the past. So again, some more factors and how to help us to interpret the results. And this is, and all the information I have in this slideshow was taken straight from DESI PowerPoint, and so I was able to research a lot of this. And so this is, you know, straight from DESI. And I want to say that because I'm not interpreting this, this is, you know, I want to make sure this is not my spin on the information, this is coming straight from DESI. But again, we talked about the standard setting by a panel of educators in order to make sure that the learning expectations were aligned from grade to grade. So here's where I want to really talk about, and so this was really looking at the projected statewide results and showing how aligning of those standards, you'll see that there's a consistent performance in each one of the achievement levels. And then at the bottom, I have the codes for what the colors mean in the chart. And as you can see here, and this is, this also panned out when you look at the actual results, that those students who performed in meeting expectations was consistent across the grades. And so that's because they worked on aligning the standards. And I want to say that in Arlington's district results, we exceeded the state's expectations in every category, in every content area, in every grade level. And so this is gonna allow us to be more like national tests such as the NAEP, that is, you know, looking at the standards and how students score on certain standards. It's more consistent. And so this was the goal, as opposed to what it was like in the past, where you see here at the bottom of the proficient level and at the top of needs improvement, you'll see the coding over here for what the colors mean. There was inconsistency from grade to grade. And so that means that the standards weren't aligned. So there's no prediction of if a child did well in third grade, we would expect them to score in the same level as they move through the grades, and we know that they're meeting the expectations. And as you see, that wasn't the case. And so here are how Arlington performed. And as you can see, and I want to point out the first two categories here, you have the district and you have the state. And so as you, over here, you have the grade level, the content area, and as you can see, all the way down from grade, all the way through grades three through eight, as a district, we outperformed the state. And so that's very good news. Also, I want to point out the SGP, which is a student growth percentile. Now, when you look at the growth percentile, you want to be between forty and sixty for moderate growth and over sixty percent for high growth. And as you can see, we're here at the moderate to high growth in every category. So that's good news, very good news. And then here, you'll see the performance on the science and technology, and then on our 10th grade, which did very well as well. So some of the, some of the things that we're talking about, and Sarah was here, talking about social and emotional learning, and we're looking at cultural competency, we're looking at other barriers in order to, and the state is advising us to take this in consideration when we're interpreting the scores, that, you know, we're looking at socioeconomic status, we're looking at culturally competent teaching practices, discipline, how we can, you know, utilize brain-based research to help improve our instructional practice, and also looking at the, you know, the homeless status of students, taking this in consideration, the backgrounds of our students, and making sure that we're taking that in consideration when we're addressing those issues in the classroom and as we're, you know, creating our classrooms and our classroom communities. So some of the next steps is using consistent protocols for disaggregating the data. One thing I'm working on right now is providing a data binder for each one of the principals. And we also want to utilize the data to inform us about specific needs, such as, you know, looking at groups of students. And so when I talk about disaggregating data, we're gonna look at, you know, our high-needs population, students with disabilities, looking at students from the different ethnicities and races to see whether or not there's a particular subgroup of students that is not as doing as well as we would like them. And then also provide professional development about, you know, instructional practices that we can research in order to address certain, certain issues that we see that comes, that comes across from analyzing the data. And then on this last slide, I have the parent resources. Again, this is from DESI. If parents want to access this, they can go onto these, they can click on these links, and they can get more information about the scores and the results. And now I'm open for questions.
If I could get you to go back to that slide on the achievement levels, legacy and Next Generation?
Yes.
Reading this, a couple of things made me very nervous. I'll wait till you get there.
You want this slide?
No, the achievement levels that compared to the legacy titles. Keep going back.
The text?
The text, yeah, sorry. Keep going, going.
The ones that compare the two?
Yeah, compare the old terms.
The terms.
They're right there, no, that one there. Under partial meeting expectations, it says the school in consultation with student parents and guardians should consider whether students need additional academic, and then not meeting, it's said, should determine the coordinated academic assistance. Not questioning the needs for those things. It just makes me, it sounds like they're legislating to providing extra services and potential, things of that nature. It makes me nervous that when that kind of thing happens, there's a tendency, I don't want to say it, it's a big step for them to legislate us doing additional programs.
Well, I think.
And I think we need, I'm not saying it isn't necessary, I just think going forward with the state doing this, that we should demand some sort of preparation and compensation. We should be doing it, but just not on our own dime.
We are doing it.
Well, but this bottom says you will do it. It does not give you any option in it for anything.
Let me just say that this is, this is one of the things that we've been discussing, I've been discussing with curriculum leaders, with Kathy. We have to let the public know that this is something that we've been doing all along. And the reason why they put that language in there, I'm sure, you know, is gonna have a certain impact. But we have to make sure that we're not allowing that to impact or have anxiety that starts to arise within the community. I think, I think the biggest thing that parents need to understand is that, you know, MCAS is one piece of evidence. And it's a snapshot in time of how a student is doing. They come in, they take the test, but students are with teachers throughout the entire year, and there's much more informative data that they're collecting. And so by the time you get your MCAS results in October, the support that students need is already there. So nine times out of ten, the MCAS is not giving us, we're not saying, oh, we're using the MCAS to determine support. So I think the good news is that we've been doing this all along. We've done this on the old MCAS, we've utilized common assessments, you know, teacher observations, all sorts of other more in-depth, you know, data to allow us to be able to say we're determining support, and the MCAS is not giving us new information on a lot of the students that we are.
I apologize for implying that that's not, that is not what I'm trying to get at. What I'm trying to get at, my fear is, when you come to the, when this eventually goes to the 10th grade, and it will be, that's a graduation requirement. And you're basically, in that language I'm interpreting, is saying that if I don't pass that in the 10th grade, I am entitled to all the support that is necessary to get me to graduate. Yes, we do it. We provide as much as we can, but we can't guarantee a hundred percent that the child's gonna be there. This is mandating it potentially. I'm not questioning what we're doing. We're doing a phenomenal job, and we are ahead of the curve. But I want us to be prepared legislatively to let the state know they need to help us in this action. That's all.
Thank you, Bill. Paul?
I mean, the important thing to remember here is that the kid is the same kid, the teacher's the same teacher, but the metric has changed. It's sort of like driving down Route Two at sixty miles an hour, and the speed limit's fifty-five, so you're over, five over the limit, nobody's gonna bother you. Everybody's going eighty anyway. But the state comes along and says, gee, we need a new metric. We're going to kilometers per hour. We're going to metrics. And while we're at it, we're gonna send the state engineers out there to look at the highway and set a new speed limit, and they set it at a hundred kilometers per hour. So instead of being five miles over the limit, you're now two and a half, three kilometers below the limit. Nothing has changed except the metric and the distribution. It's a different test, it's a more challenging test, it's a test that nobody's seen before. It's the first. It's the first time out. We did well as a district. Life is good. And, and I'm sure that there's a lot of thoughtful discussion going on in Arlington, looking at each kid, looking at each class, lining things up to the curriculum, matching content areas to instruction. And that's what we've done. The results here tonight are generally ver, high to very high growth scores, strong performance, strong performance relative to the rest of the state, on, on a test that nobody's seen before, so nobody was preparing for it. Life is good. And I congratulate the, the teachers who work hard with our kids out there. I think we should have a nice little celebration and go on with our business.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I'm wondering if we shouldn't get the video from ACMI, pull, pull this chunk out and put it somewhere on the website where parents could look at it when their scores start trickling in. I think that would be helpful, as well as listing the reference, the resources. I had two ques, maybe three. Did the state report out about how they did the adjustments between the computer-based test and the paper-based test?
So that is something that I have not been able to find the exact-
So they didn't?
You know, so-
Yeah, okay.
Actually, I know the answer to that one. Is that because the preponderance of the state took the computer-based test, they used the computer-based test as a standard and then adjusted any paper-based test to the computer.
What they probably did-
So they didn't report out the discrepancy is what I'm saying.
No, no, no.
If they're saying they're, they adjusted, they didn't-
They, they did an adjustment so that they brought the paper base to align to the computer numbers.
Right, but there was an adjustment made. Yeah, so, whoa, okay. Then can you go to the slide that's, heads impact on scores, it's near the end? Okay, that one, thank you. So my question about this is by us, do they mean them, the state, or do they mean us, the district?
So what they're doing is they're suggesting for us, districts, when I say not particularly Arlington, but districts across the state, to take these type, like educators, to take these different factors into consideration when you're looking at the results. And when we're looking at providing support for, you know, a particular group of students or a student, to take this into consideration.
And then, do they then, okay, so I was hoping it was actually the state, because then I was hoping that then they were going to say, and this is how we're going to help you fund the different, no, I'm serious.
You're right.
I'm serious. There, I mean, we know these things, we've known these things are, are issues for years, decades, probably centuries, I don't know. But the point is, we have to have the money to put the TAs or the tutors or, you know, whatever, whatever supports you're going to do, and I'm not seeing, I'm not feeling the love from DESI. I'm not seeing-
Shocking.
I know. I'm just, I'm not arguing with you, this is another one-
I totally understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Wrong spot.
Well, I'm just thinking, this is the second meeting in a row where you're on the end of getting frustration that's not aimed at you at all. It's, you know, we're just starting the budgeting process. It's not looking any different than it has at any point, which means that we're sitting here trying to pull a budget to spread over students way beyond what we would like to see. And then they're throwing something, then this like this, and I'm just, I'm frustrated. I'm smiling, but I'm really, I'm actually, I'm not smiling. I am really, really frustrated because to throw that up and to say, oh, you need to consider these things, what do they think we've been doing? I mean, I'm sorry, what do they think we've been doing? And, you know, give us some resources, you want to, you, you guys do it over, I mean, by you guys, I mean DESI, you guys do it over the state and then figure out what more resources do we need and give it to us.
Jennifer, Janice?
Oh, yeah, so maybe this can't be answered now, but I'm interested, you know, I remember PARC was very frustrating to people because it didn't give us the same tools, educate the same tools that MCAS had given educators in terms of analyzing what, what we were doing right and wrong. And I'm wondering, do we have additional tools with the next generation MCAS that we didn't have with the previous one, or is it basically about the same, or, you know, is there some issue?
What do you mean, what do you mean tools?
So in terms of like pulling apart data and sort of analyzing how we are doing as a district or as a school or as a classroom on certain types of-
There, there are resources on, on DESI that, that give like different protocols for analyzing data. So they have, you know, on the website, they have additional things that we can access. So yes, I would say yes. I have already been working with a, a protocol that we've been, I utilized with the curriculum leaders just this past Monday when we had a meeting. And we started diving into the data and really looking at our subgroups. So that, that's what I mean about just giving us time in order to do this. I mean, there's a different, you know, tools that are out there, and so you just have to, you know, select one. They pretty much are the same.
So I guess I'm just wondering, is it, is it different than it was? I mean, is there something that we're, okay, that, that we, that we didn't have before? Is there some, you know, there's some benefits to the test because it's more aligned to the common core state standards, and it's more aligned, and, and more rigor is not necessarily a bad thing, but I'm just wondering, is there additional benefits?
Yeah, the, the, the thing is, is that when we had the PARC, the PARC didn't break down content areas the way the old MCAS did. The way the state is reporting the new MCAS is parallel to the way the old MCAS is reported. So we have the ability to, to take things apart in a very rich manner.
Okay, so if you mean, if you mean the different types of reports that you can pull, so they, they have a, you know, a data management tool called Edwin Analytics. So you go onto Edwin Analytics and you can pull different reports as it relates to your school, you can look through comparison of subgroups with the state. And so those things are the same. I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question, but the reports are pretty much the same. You can pull the same reports.
Okay.
The, the one thing that we're going to have, which we used to have, is item analysis. That is a, that is one of the most important tools that we use to really look at what the questions are. With PARC, we only had-
Right.
-very little. It wasn't that helpful. So when teachers dive into it, you look at the, you know, the percentages and everything, but what you really want to see is, what are they asking here? What may have been the reason why a student got that question wrong?
Exactly.
Anyone else for a first time?
So, no, you're just beginning to look at the data and analyzing it, but the one thing that does sort of jump out a little bit on the numbers is, is the grade three scores. We're much closer to the state average there, and if you look at the rankings on the DESI website, we're much lower, it's not just all towns, it's, it's, we're, you know, we're lower in the rankings than we are on all other grades. Do that, have you started looking at that? I mean, maybe it's just the first year and, or maybe it's something different with our curriculum that's not matched up to the test.
Well, again, like I said before, we're using it as a baseline, so, I mean, for me to come up, I don't have an answer as to why that is at this present time, but, you know, hopefully over the next couple of weeks when we're disaggregating that, I can look at certain areas and see, okay, this is, this is the reason why this is happening this way. I think, I think I'm very curious in how those third graders are going to perform now that they've had an opportunity to have the test under their belt one year. You've got to remember, this is the first time third graders are taking a test of this magnitude. And so we, we, we're going to utilize this time to look at those different areas. So you're looking at test-taking ability, you know, you're looking at all different factors as it relates to, you know, that, that particular score. So, you know, hopefully, you know, and I'm, I'm confident that we'll be able to, you know, address that, because we're utilizing this as a baseline data. So I'm, I'm curious to how those same third graders are going to perform in the fourth grade.
Great, thank you.
Real quick, has DESI indicated how they're going to norm the 10th grade test?
Well, no. The, well, with the-
I'm just, I'm just nervous because it, that's the one for graduation, you can't give a practice test.
And I, and I think, and I think I understand what you're saying. I'm saying, I think what I hear you saying is that there's no way that they can have 65, 70% of the population in the state not have a state endorse diploma because they didn't meet the expectations. And so how's the state going to deal with that?
And how are they going to prepare a valid test?
Exactly. But if, but if you look at the historical context of the MCAS, that happened at the beginning. I don't know if people remember, but it happened when they first gave the, the, the-
It wasn't, the initial MCAS was not a, a graduation requirement. It was used to evaluate the school systems. When it became a graduation requirement, they had sufficient data already normed.
Well, if you look at the first-
And motivated kids.
-grade 10 test, the, the, the percentage of students who passed it was a little lower than, and then they did a little bit fixing of the test, and so now they had higher percentages.
So my question is, is this, I'm, I'm wondering what the strategy in the district is for ensuring that our, our teaching is aligned with the curriculum that's being tested in this test. Is there going to be, I mean, is there sort of going to be a review over the course of the year? Based on these results, what's, what's the strategy? Because this is not, we got, we got test results, we spent a lot of time talking about the test itself. I'm curious to know what the actions are going forward to possibly change teaching and learning, if that's necessary.
Well, I think it's already started in Arlington. If you look at the different, the amount of work that's been done around ELA, literacy, reading, math, our directors have already put those things in place, and they've already been concentrating on the curriculum and updating it. So a lot of that work is already doing. And I want to emphasize something, and, and this is something that a lot of districts and the district that I come, we don't teach to the test.
Right.
We teach to the standards. So again, utilizing this test as a baseline, kids are getting more interested, I mean, not interested, but more practice with taking this type of questions because the questions have changed. Our performance over time is going to improve, just like a lot of districts within the state. So when you talk about what are we doing, we've, we're already doing that. This is not something we're getting the MCAS and saying, now we need to start aligning our curriculum. We've already been doing that alignment along the way. There's a lot of work, as I, in my previous report, that I shared with the school committee about the summer work that was done around curriculum, with the math and with the ELA. So that work is already in place with the writing, those things are already happening.
And, and do you, do you anticipate changing anything that you're doing as a result of these tests in terms of?
Sure. I, I think, and I, one thing, we have to look at the MCAS, and it does give information, but we have to keep it in perspective about the type of information. You know, it's a summative test. A lot of these cohorts of kids that a teacher may have had for that year have moved on to the next grade. So we're looking, so when we go back and we look at the standards, so that's one report that we can utilize to really adjust our instruction. So as, as those reports, they have, you know, how a grade level did on a particular standard, and we look at the percentage of students, and then as, as Dr. Bodie spoke about, you know, looking at the item analysis and looking at specific questions. And so what was that question asking, and then making sure that that's being addressed within our instruction. So we can look for teaching trends, we can look at, look at how our kids are scoring on particular standards. Those are the type of things that we can, we can utilize that information to make those necessary adjustments to the, to the way that we're addressing a particular strand or content area.
Yeah, because I see, I mean, as, from the district level, I see the, the greatest value in the test is that allows us to see if we need to adjust our teaching in certain areas, certain classrooms to align better with the standards.
Looking at standards and looking at those item analysis, those type of reports are very valuable.
Yes. And that's part of the plan for this year, and that's part of your PD.
Absolutely. And that, that, again, I want to say that there's a lot of assessments that teachers are using on a day-to-day basis-
Yeah.
...that's connected and aligned with the standards, so that they're using that as a formative. So we have three formal assessment periods throughout the year that we give, you know, you know, assessments such as the MCAS, you know, and, and what we want to, what we want to do, like, we just started, we use an expanded pilot, the I-ready test that we gave online to our fourth and fifth graders. We want to look at that particular assessment that we give three times a year and see, how is this predicting the, you know, how is this going to be used as a predictor as how students are going to perform on the MCAS? And so that, aligning those two, as we give another round of the MCAS and be able to see that, that, that correlation, that will help us, our instruction as well.
Oh, I just would add to what Rod has said. Our curriculum in ELA and math is aligned to the standard. That was work that's been done. I, I have no, I have no doubt that that's the case. What the issue is, standards are very general statements and broad statements, and you're, the curriculum matches it, but it's really in the application of it, the types of questions that are being asked, are we asking similar enough questions? And that's what we have to take a look at. You know, you can, say you're, you're teaching critical thinking skills, and then that's a, what does that mean? And is, are we really completely in a, I understand the word, we are doing, we are introducing and have been emphasizing critical thinking skills, but are our questions that we're asking, is the discourse that we're having aligned with what is expected on this level? And it's, to, to the other point about, this is one, one piece of evidence, it really is, because we are, we looking at different things. But I, I go back to what's happened even at the 10th grade. You know, it's, it's one thing to have our own assessments, and it's one thing to have MCAS, but when you look at an international test, and we're doing really well on an international test, and we do really well on a NAEP, that says a lot right there. But we have curriculum leaders and, and, and central office staff, we are, we, we will dive into this for sure, and they already are, because they want to, they want to make sure that our students have every opportunity to succeed and do well.
All right. Thank you very much. It's time to talk about the money. John?
Jeff.
I had another question.
Okay, quick.
Can I ask?
Yep.
Okay, I had a question and a comment quickly. So in years past, I, I just wanted to pull something out, because I know people at home can't read these, read the numbers on this, but in years past, we've been really unhappy with how growth, student growth at the middle school level had been. And I just want to point out that at sixth grade, it's 50 and 51. In seventh grade, it's 58 and 57. In grade eight, they're 61 and 61. So, and this is with the more difficult tests. I don't quite understand how they got the gross scores to begin with, but we, we'll ignore that part.
Not going to pay attention.
Exactly, we're not, not going to worry about that. But this is just, I think this is a real statement to some of the changes which have been happening with, both with the curriculum and with the teaching at Ossen. And just, I wanted to be sure that people noticed that because we've complained in the past.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Good point.
Are we going to hear about subgroup scores at some point?
Yeah, so like I said before, in the next, my next report on the MCAS will dive a little deeper into the data, and we'll be looking across, you know, subgroups and, you know, looking across that district data, across the grade levels, schools. And so I will be working with Dr. Bodie to pick out those relevant areas that, you know, we need to report on.
Great, thank you.
Money time, John.
Thank you. So the, the monthly packet that you received has, has four year-to-date budget reports along with a short narrative. I promise I won't read the narrative, but I'll just make a few comments on each. We worked with the, with the budget subcommittee, and will continue to do so, to try to figure out which reports would be most useful to the school committee, provide the information you need. We expect that process is going to continue to evolve and that the reports may change based on feedback we get from the subcommittee and also the, the whole committee. Since this is the first pass at the monthly reports for the, for our, for my office, we tried to stay consistent with the look of the reports that you're used to seeing. One adjustment we did make in the format was in the assumptions or methodology used for projecting spending through the end of the year. The change, the change was to go from what used to be, the methodology used to be to project spending, fully expending every account, and then any account that had a deficit, that would just increase whatever deficit there was. So that's probably the most conservative way of doing it. What we wanted to do now that, in, in, in part of that was, because we weren't encumbering payroll, we had to do that in the payroll lines. And, you know, now that we are encumbering payroll, we can do, we can do it a little bit differently there. So what we're doing is, is trying to, is trying to project out what the actual encumbrances are, plus any known expenses to date. And instead of nailing down what we think the figure's going to be, you know, eight months from now, what we're doing is saying, this is how much money we have that's- what we're doing is saying, this is how much money we have that's uncommitted or unencumbered. So this is what the pot looks like right now, based on, on what we've spent so far. So the four reports are, there's one for each of the funding areas, that the general fund or appropriation. There's one for the grants, and there's one for the revolving accounts. And then the fourth report is cumulative of, of all of them. In the general fund report, the, the bottom line, unencumbered or uncommitted number that I was talking about, you'll see when you look at the report, is, is 670,000. That's, again, what, what that is, is that's the money that we haven't committed to date, based on $60 million, or it's almost $61 million we get from the town appropriation. So that, that represents $1.1 million of our, of our total budget. To be clear, this doesn't say we're projecting to have a surplus of $600,000. That's just where we are today. It would be unrealistic to think we weren't gonna spend any more money for the rest of the year. But it just, that's just the methodology we use. On the personnel side, each report has, you know, a personnel side and expense aside. On the personnel side, there's, you'll see if you look through it, that we're projecting to be over by about $100,000 at the end of September. I, I think that number will change based on, we do some more digging on the extended substitutes. That's really the one line that's, that, there's, there's positives and negatives in there, but that's really the one that's putting it over. And I, and I think that's based on projecting out on the three-year experience rate for, for what we've been spending, only because we didn't have enough data of how many we've used, or, you know, haven't had a chance to get everybody together to say, what's a realistic number to project for this account. On the other side, on the expense side, you would see that the unencumbered or uncommitted is, is around 600 and, $765,000 right now. If you, if everybody spent their budgets in full, and we spent all that, we would, we would finish the year in a deficit of $100,000. So that's why you'll see that we have 765 in expenses, but we only have 670 total. That's because we're over by, projecting to be over by 100 in personnel. And the, what we like to do is kind of identify the hot list of what the, what accounts we're watching. With number one on the hot list will always be out-of-district tuitions for special ed. You know, it's, we monitor the, well, Allison and her group do a great job monitoring the existing students that may require an out-of-district placement, or have been, you know, laterally placed, or anything like that. And at the end of, at the end of September, that had, I think it was six or seven kids on it, and it was like $335,000. I looked today before I came down here, and now there's 10 kids on it. It's more like $500,000. That, that number fluctuates, and the further you get into the year, the less it would cost if someone were to go out for the rest of that year. So that, that number can change quite a bit. But it's, it's good that they're constantly updating that, because it means, you know, we're keeping a good eye on that. Another area, if you flip through the report, you would see there's computer supplies, looks like it's over by $57,000. Just another area, I need to work more with Dave Good on that, to make sure that there isn't something that was charged there that is supposed to be charged somewhere else, so we can just flush that out to see. I know there were some, some expenses that needed to be made that we didn't plan for with firewalls and stuff. But now that we have more and more devices in schools and, and using some online testing, it's been, it's necessitated buying some more hardware for Dave. So we'll just need to keep an eye on that and work with him to try to nail down what that actual number is. I'm guessing for the next report, we may be able to get a tighter number for that. Moving on to the grant, should I finish and then see if there's questions? I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll finish. You, you please.
So moving on to the grants, there's, you'll see that there's a, a list of grants in the narrative. You may remember that when the budget was set last spring, we were worried that, that the title, we might take a hit in Title I, and that we expected a decrease in there. The good news is that didn't materialize, and that, you know, we did get, between all of the grants, another $240,000 more than we had budgeted for. That's the good news. The, the bad news is that 25% of that was, was eaten up by the increase in proportional share, which is the money that, from our federal grants that we get, that we have to hold for private school use, for any of the private schools in town, to be able to use that. The, the increase, the big, the bigger increase is more as the state continues to be more and more clear on how you're supposed to calculate that proportional share, then districts are, are seeing that that number is climbing. What this has to do is with the amount of eligible kids that attend private schools. And unfortunately, it's not just kids from Arlington that attend private schools. It's wherever they're from, if they go to a private school in Arlington are eligible, they count towards proportionals, yeah. So that's a big change. That made our number go, you know, ate up about $60,000 of that, $240,000. The rest of that went to help offset other areas of, of personnel increases that, where we were able to move people that had been paid from grants in the past. This year, we thought maybe they weren't going to be able to, but in fact, now that the money was there, they were able to. So if we didn't have that additional grant money, the deficit in personnel line would have been much higher, what we'd be talking about right now. In the revolving accounts, we have, we expect, you know, we're collecting and, and paying out what we expect. We are, changed a little bit the method, instead of spending throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, making a journal entry to try, to try to balance the budget. What we're trying to do is, is in the areas where we offset the operating budget with revolving accounts, we're charging, we're either charging it directly to the, to the revolving account, or making the journal entry as soon as the, as soon as we notice that the charge has been made, to try to, to try to make the operating budget really, you know, accurate. I want, just one thing to point out, within the revolving accounts is the circuit breaker. It was asked at one of the meetings, I can't remember if it was the budget meeting, budget subcommittee or here, to just kind of tell us where we are versus what we, we originally going, the budget was originally gonna use just over 1.7 million, which is what we were projecting last year's balance to be. During the budget process, we increased that to just over 2 million by $300,000, knowing that this year would probably, that our, that our foundation number for our net claim for the circuit breaker reimbursement would be higher, and that we would get more. The ending balance was actually a little higher than we projected, was just over 1.8 million. So we're using, right now, about $225,000 of this year's reimbursement on this year. This year's reimbursement is, is set right now currently at just under 2.1 million. So that, but that's at a 65% reimbursement rate. I don't, I, I, I think it will probably be higher than that. Traditionally, the number that comes out in September is much, is lower than what is the final number is. So I think we would be able to make up some of that $300,000, if not all of it, before the end of this year. In the combined report, I think the, maybe the unencumbered number is not helpful, but maybe it's, it's helpful to see them all in one, so that you can tie down to the budget that you approved. That was the $66 million number. You can see what the total, what the total that, it is now, and how that compares to that. I also, at the very end of the narrative, just recommended a transfer. We talked about it at the budget subcommittee, about to do the report, assuming the transfer is to true-up salary lines between turnover, just within the teaching lines, along with 96 lines that would have a, a change in it, up or, up or down. Could be anything, could be someone left, could be a column move, it could be anything like that. So what this transfer I'm recommending is, is within the six budget categories that the school committee has, what the beginning budget was, what the transfer request is, and then now what the adjusted budget would be. So I'd be happy to take questions.
So your, your first, the first order of business, you're requesting a transfer. You wanna make a motion?
Yeah. So I move to approve the budget transfers and category amounts as presented in the monthly financial report dated September 2017.
Second for discussion. Okay. Would you want to talk, speak of the motion, Kirsty?
I think we need to tidy up the budget as discussed, and this is the way, this is how we approve the changes which have been made overall, so.
Lynn, then Bill. Lynn, you're the candidate.
Yeah, so I just noticed this, this afternoon, John, sorry. So when we approved the budget transfer categories in March, or whenever it was, she include, she included the revolving accounts in those totals, but not the grants.
Okay.
So I would just recommend changing the motion to adopt the revised budget. Not really, because the transfer numbers are incorrect from what we previously approved.
Is that okay? Does that give you which one?
I think so. Adopting the budget in total, but then at the next meeting, request the...
No, no, just adopting your revised numbers as the budget going forward.
Got it. Okay.
And that takes care of the transfer, you're saying?
Well, we...
I would assume, the transfer numbers are wrong.
The adjustments are different.
Yeah. So rather than recalculate them.
But, but we don't have to take another vote to transfer. Once we, once we, if we, if Kirsty withdraws her motion, and we...
You make your...
And you make yours, we don't have to take a transfer vote next week, two weeks.
Unless the numbers change, correct?
Unless the numbers change.
Okay. I withdraw my motion.
So Mr. Carden has a motion.
I move that we adopt the revised budget for the budget transfer category as presented.
Second.
Second. Okay, now do you want to speak to the motion? You kind of already have, but do you want anything else?
No, I did have a, a question, but...
Well, it's about this motion?
Yes.
About your motion, okay? Go ahead.
So John, do you, do you know what the 400,000 decrease in special education is?
Yeah, so 300 of it is using 300 additional circuit breaker.
Okay.
So that's the bulk of it, I actually do. And then I think the rest is, is based on certain amount of TAs that we
Right, right.
were gonna have that
Okay.
you know, now are either in a different category now. But the bulk of it, you know, 75% of it is the...
The circuit breaker we added. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Lynn's motion, Bill?
Well, I was just gonna follow up and ask a question about, what is the administrative addition for the administration?
So the administrative is, is because of where stuff was budgeted in certain buckets, in what it is. It's Sarah, who is here today, guidance, you know, is $100,000. It basically wasn't in the right bucket for, when, when we true'd up the salary lines.
It was in the full bu, it was in the full budget.
It's in the full budget, but it's just not. So it's music director, two assistant principals, the dean at the high school, guidance, world language.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. So on Mr. Carden's motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 I'll oppose. It carries unanimously. Okay. Any other questions for John? Any other questions?
Yeah.
No, to me, I'll go first.
Oh, um... Is that...
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So I have two questions, or three questions, actually. One is, do we know what's going on in Title I? Do we know what's going on next year? The second question is, the personnel increase, is it mostly the additional TAs that we've added? Are there, are, did the salaries come out different when we went to look for people? You know, what's, so, so going on with that? And then the third question is, the, this private school thing is new to me. I'd never heard of that before. And, and I'm just curious, I mean, how much do we send to private schools? How much per kid?
So actually, it, it has been around for a long time. However, the DESE issued clarifying guidance, much more detailed than they've ever provided before, around how to calculate it. And so as John was mentioning previously, we would, we were required to set aside a proportionate amount, which we do also in our Title I as well. But it was based on students who were Arlington residents, who were attending a private school located in Arlington, so our three parochial schools and Leslie Ellis. And the guidance that the DESE has further issued requires that we consider all students who attend those schools, because under the federal regulations, it's all students who are residents. However, Massachusetts provides for a local entitlement, so that their local school district would most likely be the ones who are serving their special ed needs. So if we have an Arlington resident who attends Arlington Catholic, they come to us for IEP services and whatnot. A student in Medford most likely will get their IEP services from Medford. And we weren't previously calculating them in our total, but we are now required to. So that went from 31 students to, was it 87, I think, that we now had to consider. And when you do proportionate share, it's the number of students in those schools compared to the number of students within your district that receive special ed services. So if we have about 900 students, 81 of those is close to 10% of our grant, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So the other two questions, the personnel piece, what's the difference?
Oh, yeah. Where were the numbers off?
It was a little bit of all the categories.
All the above, okay.
Yeah, so it was, you know, some added sections at the, at the high school to, for, for class size. It was two K5 sections that didn't exist during the budget process, and class size, TA, social worker. There was things like that, plus some not matching up to, to what we had budgeted. People, you know, so it's, and then column moves.
Okay.
You know, a little bit of everything. And then for Title I...
Title I, yes.
I think I'd probably prefer Julie to answer, Julie Dunn to answer the questions. But, and what she has been teaching me is that why it's so fluid for us is, is because of how they're gonna count kids that are in transition for, in a bed.
Okay. Great. And they didn't before.
So I, I think it's, I think it's just worried about that they, they wouldn't count for us if they, if they, because we're so close to the cutoff.
Right, yeah.
If they don't count, we can go under the...
Right.
And then our...
If they count, okay. And they count by the October 1st? Like, the kids who are with us on October 1st? Or do they count, like, all the kids that we see, which I know is much more?
So they also, under the new ESSA, they changed the status of students who were formerly in star beds or were considered homeless, and now they are considered in 24-hour substitute care or awaiting foster care. So under those regulations, there are also different requirements or under continuity of education. So some of those students in the past would be coming to Arlington Public Schools. But the regulations now call for them to stay, if possible, within their previous educational placement for the continuity piece. So, you know, students that may have come before, we are now going to be supporting their transportation return to Boston or to Everett or whatnot. So those students would no longer be Arlington Public School students.
Interesting, okay.
Dunn, you have a question?
All right. Yes, sorry, John. So in the all-in report, or it's, it's the same in both of them, but in the all-in report, if you look at the 81, 203 substitute teachers line, so what is, what is the transfer, what does the transfer adjustment represent?
So the, so the transfer in is because of where it was in the initial budget that was approved, is, is exactly what we put into Munis. So it was in, it was in a line like an 81, 1, 112 line, instead of a 81, 203, or whatever it was. So in order to, in order to move the money to the, to proper account, it just needed to go from one bucket to the other.
Okay. Okay. Because when I look back at the budget that we approved, there was actually 260, 262 in that line in the budget we approved, but in Munis, you must have put it somewhere else.
Yeah, it was 258, but it was in a different, it was in a different line.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Thanks, John. Okay, we're gonna move on to the superintendent's report. Go ahead.
All right. Well, our biggest news, we put out in a press release this week, and that is, we met with the MSBA board for design, the designer review panel, which included 13 members of appointed board members. Some of, some of that, some of those board members included staff people at MSBA. Mr. Thilman and I were, were two of the three representatives, and the Arlington or any district in, in this situation has the town manager, superintendent, and one other member, which often is the school committee chair or building chair. Turns out that we have the same person in both positions. For this meeting, we had to have designated the town manager, because he was at the, at a conference in San Antonio for municipal town managers. So, it was a very exciting morning, we had two very competent, and I'm, I'm sure that both would have done a terrific job. We, we had Feingold Alexander and HMFH. Both gave outstanding interviews. Both, both of those firms are currently working in Arlington. HMFH has worked in Arlington longer than that, 'cause that was the firm that we worked with to build the Thompson School. The, you know, the, all of the firms that applied had been vetted with the designer review committee, and the overwhelming choice of the designer review committee was HMFH. And really, it, it, it fell on, basically, the experience in this kind of project. It's not to say that Feingold Alexander does not do renovations, in fact, we're very pleased that they're doing the renovation on Gibbs. It's just really the tight urban spaces doing this kind of complexity. There's a little bit more experience in the, in HMFH portfolio for this kind of work. But we could not have been more pleased to have such fine, fine firms that are willing to work with us. In fact, the vote was tied at one point. And that just shows you that, you know, how, and what high regard both firms were held. But we, in, in a second vote, HMFH prevailed. And we are now in a situation where they'll be engaged in contract negotiations, and the hope that that will be successful, I'm fairly confident that that will be successful, and then we will begin in more earnest the feasibility study.
Who is involved in the negotiations? Is MSB still driving the bus?
No, well, yes and no, I shouldn't say no, there, there is a standard contract form.
Right, but I mean, the, the, who is the contract between the town and?
Town, yes. So this negotiation occurs on the town's side with the town manager?
Will you be part of that? Is, is the building committee part of that, or did, I know them.
We meet again on November.
The permanent town building committee is not part of that, but that's usually the ones who do the contracts. And I was just curious.
We meet on November 7th, I don't.
It's the Tuesday, 7th.
7th, okay. I don't, if that's the case, I don't think it comes to us. Does it come to us, we take a vote, is that what we do?
I think so.
Would it go?
That's sort of what I know.
The permanent town building committee does, does all the construction contracts on the town, but I thought we were out of it.
Oh, you are.
They're out of it because of MSBA.
Oh, the permanent town building committee is out of it, yes.
Right, but what I'm, I understand that, but they're the ones that usually do all the contract, construction negotiations. We'll be out of it because it's MSBA, but you said it's with the town, I'm just curious. It's not, I don't wanna take time now.
The town manager signs the contract.
I understand, but I.
So I suspect it'll be on the agenda. It sounds like, it sounds like, we haven't, I haven't talked to Adam, we haven't talked to Adam yet about the agenda, but I suspect he'll put it on there.
And assuming, assuming a successful contract negotiations, the hope we will have it, if not, the complete and abbreviated presentation as they gave MSBA. And both, as I said, both presentations were excellent, they really were. The quality of both firms was very, was very clear. So, as I said, I think Arlington was very fortunate in having both of these. In fact, I would say that the other contenders as well were very reputable firms, no, no doubt about it. So now we'll be moving forward with the feasibility study, which will, interestingly, part of the, the, the beginning part of feasibility is actually looking at whether, what, what is the best option for Arlington? Whether you should have, build a new building on another site, whether.
Yeah, good luck on that one.
Five lines.
The thing that I can, the thing that I can say is that both presentations focused on this site and how we would potentially have a renovation addition. And these were only conceptual ideas because it, thank you, she's freezing. The, the temperature on that doesn't really regulate very well. There's a lot more steps that go on before we actually, we come to a final design. In fact, the discussion was, we could be going through 15, 20 iterations as we go forward. And one of the major factors besides the site, the enrollment growth that we have, we have the design number, but it's also the educational plan, and that's part of this next phase. Both, both of the firms were using NuVista, which is David Stephen, who was the person who came, who led us through the Gibbs process. So he will be leading this process, we would be working with him regardless, and he's very well respected in the state. And then that will involve focus groups, both of all stakeholders. So I can't give you any timelines or dates yet, but I suspect that it'll, it'll really sort of gain momentum after the, after the holidays.
Oh, I just wanted to make a plug for this amazing blog post that the communications committee, is that the right name? Got put up on designer role and selection process. It's filled with great information, and I assume that there'll be future blog posts with additional information, and really goes into detail about what we expect to see, even though we don't have the dates yet, so.
Well, you can thank your colleague, Dr.
Yes, and, and Dr. Alzambe is on that committee.
Yes, as well as Amy Spear, and there's other people on the committee. But, but the two of them in particular were responsible for that particular blog. Yes, in, in researching the, the, the whole scope of what a designer does. And I wanna thank Julie Dunn, 'cause she worked also with them, and we were working with press releases for either, in either situation. But, you know, we wanted to be able to release that information as soon as possible, but we also had to be given the green light by MSBA, because they, there are processes that they follow as well, which we did. We waited until we were told that we could go forward with that. But I, I'm glad you brought it up, because as we go through all of this, information is going to be available on that website, which we'll try to put out time and time again in terms of how to connect to it, certainly newsletters, certainly, you know, the, the high school principal. But all of the information will be on that website.
What's the URL, just for the public listening?
AHSbuilding.org.
Yeah, so there's a lot of good information on there, a lot of very good information.
Do you wanna talk about the bulletin, which is? Okay, so another thing that the building subcommittee, the communications subcommittee felt was important is to have something that actually ends up in your inbox, so that you don't have to keep going back to the website. So what we've done on the website, there's a way to sign up for a bulletin. And if you sign up for the bulletin, very soon, we're hoping like next week, you'll get the first one. What's that?
The subscribe, connect with us subscribes?
Mm-hmm.
Bring it now.
Right. Anyway, so the bulletin will cover the major highlights of, major last few highlights of the past whatever two, three weeks. It's not gonna come out often, it's gonna be no more than every two weeks, and maybe once a month until we have more stuff going on, but, so that's something people can do.
I think people are gonna be pleased with the communication.
Oh, it's, it's great so far.
Yeah, so it's, we're, this is because of Kirsty and, and Amy were paying attention to it. Okay, anything else on this? Anything else?
Not on this particular topic, no, but as I always do, I give updates on the different buildings. The Stratton is almost 100% there, I think really we're there now, the grass has been planted, seeded. And so we are now talking about ribbon cutting ceremony and open houses for people to, to come in. I believe all the furniture's there. When, when Mr. Han and I were talking about this, we were talking about what would be the best way to have a ribbon cutting. And we'd like to involve the students and the faculty. And so what we're thinking is having it toward the end of a school day. And right now, we're, we have a tentative date, but he's looking at different things. The tentative date is the, the 9th of November, but since we'll probably be out in the blacktop, we're gonna have to think about rain dates or snow, I don't wanna say snow, but, don't say that, don't say that, rain dates. 'Cause I don't think that it would be effective in the gym to have everybody in there, though that, that is an option which he's going to look into. So after the ribbon cutting, which we will all, of course, be invited to, as well as, that's the other thing, I wanna make sure that town officials can come, so I don't wanna, you know, say exactly the date.
I was just gonna say, why don't you wait until you get everybody in line?
Yeah, we gotta get everybody in line, we'll find a date, it's gonna be mid-November for sure. And, you know, and we'll have student performances, maybe some students will talk about the, you know, what it's been like, and it'll be, it'll be a very, be a very lovely ceremony. And then following it, we'll also have the school open for people just to walk around. And we're also going to identify a weekend date, 'cause I know that, you know, a 2:30 to, to 4 o'clock open house isn't going to align well with people's work schedules. So we are gonna look at a Sunday afternoon as well, and we'll get, that date hasn't been set, but as soon as we, we have it, information will be put out in all the different ways that we can. So that's, that's terrific, and I also wanna make sure that if we can have the architects there. The, the students have written some very lovely letters to our architects, so those would be very nice to, to see as well. All right, so then there's Gibbs planning, we've been, really, significant amount of time has been put into looking at the schedule, because until you know the schedule, you don't really know the budget. And there is going to be an incremental cost, as we all know, to what the operational costs of the building are gonna be. And as we go along, we, we, we still don't have the, you know, we're still loading in and practicing with it, but I think that this point, we're, we've narrowed in to, you know, a, a budget. Right now, long-range planning is carrying a million dollars, I think that may be a little shy, but we, to what we need, but that's a, that's some of the discussion that we'll have going forward. One of the things that John D'Nizio and Ruthie Bennett have looked into is what, what are the operating costs of the building? And when we did initial budgets, we didn't, we didn't have a number there. But what they've looked at is comparable buildings, of comparable square footage in, in Arlington, and what is the cost for utilities, electricity, supplies? And we have a, a number now, which is $80,000. So that's, we're fairly confident that's a, that's a pretty good number, but that was over and above the personnel cost. So that's why I mean it'll be, it'll be a little bit over a million dollars on this. Hoping maybe in the 1.1 range, which we'll have some discussion about. But we're at the point now where we can start getting feedback on a lot of this, and in fact, I was having some emails going on about it before I came to the meeting. We're meeting with teachers next week, I've already invited the advisory committee to a meeting on the 14th to give some feedback on a number of things. And then we're gonna have a parent forum on November 28th. So that will be, people will be invited to that, I'm not quite sure where that's going to be, it'll be to 7 o'clock. But the last time we had one of those, it was fine in here, I'm not sure that this will be fine, because I think the interest in what's going on is, is only increased. And so that's something we're gonna, that, that, it'll be a TBD on location right now. But there are things that people understand, there's sort of, in what we would call the parking lot. I mean, there's things that we know we have to address, such as after, you know, the after-school programming, but what was really the top priority was really, you know, zeroing in on the budget, and you can't do that until you know what your FTEs are. So we're, you know, as you know, in the budgeting process, it's, it's a, it's a fine science, and sometimes you're not, a little bit, you're a little bit off on it, but because this is gonna be incremental to our budget, we wanna make sure we're as, very accurate, as, as accurate as we can be at this time. So that's where we are. Any questions on the Gibbs piece of it before I go on? I would like to say to.
Construction's going along.
Construction is going along well, if you go by it, you'll, the demolition is almost complete, they're working again on Saturdays. They have been working Saturdays for a while now. And we'll be, the whole idea is we'll be moving forward and certainly getting in there before the, the winter.
Yeah, it looks like there's a lot going on, but I don't know where it is relative to where it should be.
Dear, if I may?
Sure.
The last PTBC meeting, they, we're talking over 90% complete on demolition and removal of the stuff, and that's the big area where you find surprises and stuff, they found a couple, but they're still within the budget and everything. And I, I mean, I know nothing about construction, but Feingold, they're really on top of things, and their, their people are there answering questions and anticipating questions and stuff. And similar with the architects up at Stratton, too, we've been very fortunate with them. I'll leave it at those two.
Well, on the, on the leave it at those two, we still do not know completion date or an occupancy certificate yet.
For Thompson.
For Thompson. It remains a, a source of frustration. But once we know that, then we can, then we can move into gear in terms of how we're gonna do the move, and when we will do the move. And maybe by the next time we have a meeting, I can tell you more, but right now, I can't.
I would like to commend to the superintendent and to the entire population of this town how durable and innovative this principal and the faculty and the students are at Thompson undergoing this. It's, they, they, I gotta tell you, if, the little bit that I've seen, the children don't look like they've been affected. I'm sure they, they, they do, but the teachers and the administration has done a phenomenal job.
I was over the other day, I don't think they're affected, I think it just, the kids seem to be fine.
It's, it's still a burden on the teachers and the administration, but they've done well.
The teachers have been amazing, they've, there's been no complaints, they could complain, but they haven't, and.
To their credit and to the administration's credit.
Much to their credit, they, they've just, they've been wonderful about all this, and, you know, once we know when we can move, then we're gonna gear into a plan for how it's gonna happen. And the principal and I have already been talking about some ideas. 'Cause we don't wanna wait to, once we know we can get in, we don't wanna wait until vacation. But then how do you orchestrate all that, and so that's what we're working on. And Hardy's moving along as well. I've been, could not be more pleased with some of the creative ideas that have been offered by architects to solve a few problems, a couple of them mentioned in the past. I think the, the big news on, on Hardy is, has to do with playgrounds, in terms of where we're moving on that. There is a need to do a Lake Street side, and that, that, that remains, that remains a request to capital, and it also remains a request to CPA. But I think that we're going to be adjusting that in terms of the CPA, more of a, a study that would be needed for the Chandler side of the building as we, we move forward. One of the things that came out in a lot of the discussions with Hardy parents, it's not that they just want the restoration of the existing playground after construction, it's really that they want us to take a look at the, the whole side of the building, you know, should more asphalt come up? Or how could the space be used differently? And that would require a study. The, I anticipate, the idea would be that that would not be completed before, at the time of move-in, but it would probably not occur until the following year. So we're looking at options in terms of, you know, how that will move forward. But I think there is strong unanimity that we, we want Hardy to have a good play area. It's the only school that does not have an adjacent parks field. And so, you know, we, we need to make the best use of the space that we have, because we're gonna have a lot of students there. And that's where we are.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, it will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of minutes?
I'd like the minutes polled.
Okay, we're gonna poll the minutes. Approval of warrant, warrant number 18076 dated 10/12/2017, total amount 642834.97. Trip, approval of trip, no approval of trip. Approval of job descriptions, young committee education, the summer fund program coordinator, and the promotions program coordinator. So with the minutes out, all those, they have a motion?
They'll move.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries, you have a question about the minutes?
On the minutes, the second page, last. On the minutes, the second page, last paragraph, the last sentence. It says, "Mr. Han indicated that he had mentioned before the handbooks were not updated, and the school committee council is responsible to update these." What I said was, "Mr. Han indicated that he had mentioned to the superintendent that the handbooks had not been updated in the past two years, and that we spent a lot of money to legal counsel to update them." I have this in writing, I can give it to.
Give it to Karen?
Yep.
So we have a motion to amend the minutes made by Mr. Haner.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schlickman. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the minutes as amended are approved. Okay. School members deliver evaluation of superintendent Bodie to Jeff. I'm assuming that's happened.
Email.
Email, right.
You got them.
Okay. So I'm going to work with Karen to figure out, we're going to compile these together. You, I'm doing it? Okay, I'm doing it. Is that, the chair does? The chair does?
Chair does.
Chair does it all by himself? Yeah. I will do it. So I.
Get out, get out Word and cut and paste.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's cut and paste.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, but, okay, so Bill, did you send it electronically?
Yeah, she's already got it.
So you've got.
I have it, I haven't sent it to you.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I need a few more.
Yeah, I know that. Okay. So if, you know, my plan was to do this next week, so if you can possibly get these to Karen by, you know, Sunday night at the latest, that would be really good. Okay, and then I'll compile it all, and then we'll discuss it, we'll do the presentation on the 9th. Okay, there's no policy, this, Dr. Allison Ampi, your report, Budget Subcommittee?
Okay, so Budget Subcommittee's been busy over the past couple of weeks. We've had two meetings on the 17th and the 24th. We'll meet again on the 8th. First, we recommend that we move, that the Budget Subcommittee recommends to the full school committee that the budget calendar be adopted.
Have a second, please? Your motion by Dr. Allison Ampi, second by Mr. Haner. Discussion on the motion, do I speak to the motion?
There has been no changes since you saw it last week. It's the calendar that we're going to follow.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so other things we've discussed, we heard preliminary numbers on the Gibbs costs in terms of teaching and stuff. We also discussed budget book. By budget book, I mean the one that Finance Committee gets, not the Town Meeting Book that Town Meeting gets. We have decided that in the coming year, we are going to adopt a new format, or we're going to start transitioning to a new format. It's a format which is seen as best practice by the Association of School Business Officials International. It's the, it's called the Meritorious Budget. There's an award which you can apply for. We're not going to apply, we're not trying to get awards. What we're trying to do is get something which makes more sense. And then, once we're starting to transition this, then we're going to be soliciting more feedback from the public, from Finance Committee and stuff, about how to improve it and make it really work for Arlington. But the first thing is just getting a different, we think, better skeleton. And we voted to adopt that. And I'm going to be working with Mr. Denizio and Julie Dunn to kind of figure out how we're going to switch things up, so the budget book is going to look very different this year. And you'll hear more about that later.
So that'll raise our growth scores as a district.
I wish.
It'll make it look like we have more money, but we're just transferring it to Canadian funds.
I'm hoping there's going to be more grass. And there's, and things that explain what we're doing and how we're doing it, and what we're spending our money on. For, those, the grass may be coming in like year two and stuff, but there's a better place for them. And it's going to be a hybrid this year, and it's going to be less of a hybrid than next year, next year's, but I think it's going to be an improvement.
Okay, thank you very much. Next report is Community Relations, Cindy?
I just wanted to let, let's see, who's up next? It is me and Kirsty on the 4th of November, and we will be at Whole Foods for a school committee chat.
See if they get a crowd there, yeah.
That's it, yeah. We'll try to.
That'd be fun.
Do a little bit more.
Professor Schlickman, you have the District Accountability Curriculum Instruction Assessment Report?
No report, but we'll probably be looking for another meeting mid-November.
Okay. Facilities, Jennifer?
Yeah, so we, I had a meeting with parents and the principal of Hardy on the 16th to talk to them about their concerns, which then came up with a sort of a more concrete plan forward on the 18th, where we had a facilities meeting to talk about the needs at Hardy. And the issue for them is they're building an addition, I mean, the plan is to build an addition on the current playground space. And it's not only on the current playground space, but it's on sort of the little sliver playground space that's not concrete. And so what you're left with is very little non-concrete space on that Chandler Street side. And so there's just been a concern that that doesn't, that doesn't meet the needs of all children, because there's a certain group of children who just like the concrete and use it a lot, and then there's a bunch of other kids who doesn't fit their needs. So just to hopefully come up with a design that, that serves everybody. So the current plan is to request the CPA funding for this study and potentially for a nicer fence. So I want to emphasize to the public that the fence that's there now is not the permanent fence. I know it's really ugly. A lot of concern about that. It is not the permanent fence, so hopefully get a nicer fence there. And, and, you know, we'll see what the study says, if they find it, hopefully.
And so the CPA is the Community Preservation Act.
Sorry, CPA is the Community Preservation Act, yes. And then the second thing we discussed is just sort of the, the variety of technological issues that parents have had with different things in the district, from how absences are reported, conferences, how information is given out to parents. And I, and I, I think we didn't get, we got a sense that these are problems that the district is working on, that hopefully we've made progress on from last year, and that hopefully we'll continue to make progress. And so just sort of talk about some of the issues that had come up in the district.
Thank you, Lynn.
That says a comment to that.
Yeah.
It might be useful to have Mr. Good and his team come to a meeting. He hasn't been here for a long time.
Yeah, that might be nice.
Can we make that happen?
Sure.
Yeah. You want to kind of an update on technology in the district and?
Yeah, he's aware of some of these issues.
Yeah.
Some of those.
Very aware of the issues.
Okay, so we should, let's, Karen, let's like kind of look for a time that works for David and, okay.
But I will, can I make my comment?
Yeah, of course.
We, from last year, we worked with the company that we hired on how to improve conferences, and we did mock, a lot of work with them. And what was unfortunate is then, when we came to the first conference time this week, they had, they had us delay it for an hour or so. But then once they opened it, then we had like 1,700 hits in an hour's time. And people must have just been waiting for it. But we, you know, we are going to.
Because they know, if you're not there in the first five seconds, you don't get a spot.
No, I understand. But what, what was frustrating for us is that we had done a lot of work with them and made it very clear. So what the delay was, they had to switch their server. So anyway, this is, this is something we're looking at, and we may be looking for a different vendor in this regard. But I think right now, it's going very smoothly.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have a delay. But I mean, it's just an awkward system.
Didn't, didn't we have kind of similar problems last year? I mean, that they knew it was supposed to be a good, and then the second time when the high school went, they were supposed to have upgraded, and they still have problems. Yeah, I think it's time to.
Well, they, they were, this was discussed with them last year, is like, we're going to give this another try. So I have to say, other than that delay, I think right now it's going very smoothly. But this is something we're going to consider as we go into the next year.
Policies and procedures, Lynn, do you have any?
Yes, our, our meeting got rescheduled. Hopefully it will be on November 6th, though we still have not met yet.
Okay, thank you. School enrollment task force is really nothing at this time. Legal services review?
Nothing at this time.
School Building Committee, I think we talked about that. Gibbs Committee?
There has been a meeting set for Monday the 13th? What day is that?
Tuesday.
Yes, the 13th, Monday the 13th.
Monday the 13th.
Monday the 13th of November will be the next Gibbs Advisory Committee meeting.
Warrant Committee?
Sign the checks.
Okay, good. Liaisonary reports, any liaison reports?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Edco's School Committee Roundtable, I met yesterday, and the speaker was from the MTA with a whole room of school committee people, fascinating. Discussed different forms of negotiation with an emphasis on interest-based bargaining. And there was also a discussion on open bargaining that Conca participated in, which the bargaining, anyone could come in, including the public. And they got a lot of questions on that, new approach.
Any announcements, Jennifer?
Oh, just wanted to say that Dr. Allison Ampi, myself, and Mr. Haner, and Mr. Spiegel, and some other people in the district actually went to this Diversity in Education Conference in Weston. Oh, and, and Mr. McNeil, sorry. Yeah, so went to this Diversity in Education Conference in Weston, and, and there was just some very interesting information. Actually, I photocopied stuff that I need to give out to you, and I'm sorry, I left it at home, some of the data, the information that was given to us, but.
I just like they had, there were a couple of our high school students on a panel there, and they, those students, from all the schools were fantastic. I think they, for me, that was the highlight of the day.
Yeah, that was, that was quite good.
It was really well.
And Mr. Haner was on one of the panels, it turned out. And he did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, shoot, now I forgot what I wanted to say. Oh, one thing, I happened to be sitting with people from, no, Canton, and one of them was the head of their cafeteria service. And she actually talked about how she was making, how her service had professional development goals. And I thought that was interesting. But then her goal was to have everyone smile at the students as they came through the line. And she said that she.
That was last year's goal. This year's was to learn everyone's name.
Ah, okay, I missed, I didn't hear that part.
All the kids' names. Yeah, she said that was tricky, but that was her goal. Yeah.
I just thought that was really cool. And, and that, I didn't hear that part of the conversation.
That's awesome.
Well, that's, I thought, it's so simple. It actually makes a big difference. It's really easy to evaluate. You know, she said, I can just walk through lines, I can tell if they're doing or not. And I also thought the idea of making sure that their staff is having professional development and stuff, I just, I liked the whole thing I was hearing about this. And this was just like a sidebar conversation. She, I mean, they mentioned it somewhere, someone just talked to me, and then I realized she was sitting next to me, so I talked to her. But I just thought if we could bring something like that here, I think it, I just liked it. I think it'd be really helpful for the kids.
May I comment?
Yes, of course.
Our Director Food Service does have professional development, I'm not sure what the goals are for, but one of the things when we do, when we've had responsive classroom training, the idea is to have all of the custodians, the secretary, the food service, everybody be aware of it. And, and I know, well, we're not, we're not, every elementary teacher has not gone through this. In the schools where there is a majority, that attention has been given to that issue.
Phil? I'd like to announce the Rory Club of Arlington will be having their flags for Heroes again this year. On November 2nd, with the help of high school students, we will be placing 160 flags this year. That's 40 more than last year. And a dedication will be held on November 5th at 1:00 PM in front of the high school, and the dedication this year will be in memory of the late Senator Donley.
Very nice.
Oh, and the money raised from this goes to scholarships at the high school.
Anything, any other announcements, any other future agenda items besides the technology? Jennifer, yeah?
No, I just have an announcement.